Everyone, I have 7:00 PM here on April 26, 2021 for the City Council's Study Session. The mayor and council have determined that in-person meeting of the City Council is impossible and impractical due to the COVID-19 pandemic. When an in-person meeting is impossible and impractical, Iowa Code Section 21.8 permits a governmental body to conduct a meeting by electronic means. The meeting will be conducted by video conference using Zoom from the council chambers. The mayor and the necessary staff will be in the council chambers. The seven council members will not be in the council chambers but will participate via Zoom conferencing. The audio and video conference of the meeting will be broadcast on the public access channels. We will strive to maintain the quality of the video and audio during that broadcast. Public access is available through this broadcast. Comments for items that are on the agenda may be made by submitting them prior to the meeting to the city clerk, mayor, or any of the council members by calling through a 9596-0179 or at HTTPS://zoom.us/meeting/ x/register and a whole bunch of letters and numbers as posted on the agenda during the meeting. Meeting manager Sylvie Capto will include a statement explaining why an in-person meeting was impossible or impractical. Ms. Clerk, I ask you to conduct the roll call as we call the meeting to order.
Bow four?
Yeah.
Bergen?
Here I am.
Drinkow?
Here.
Glazer? Clayton Kengis?
Prison.
Rothie?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Move forward with the approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion in second, motion by Schneider, second by Bergen that is. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. I'd also like to welcome back Mr. Dr. James Pope as our guest council member. Thank you for joining us for the third meeting of the month. Next item on the agenda, I have a proclamation for National Historic Preservation Month. Hold up here. I got it. Thank you, though. Proclamation for National Preservation Month. Read it here. Whereas local historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability; and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds; and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people; and whereas May 2021 offers the opportunity to celebrate the 25th anniversary of the certification of the Waverly Historic Preservation Commission, which in 1996 is required when the State Historical Society of Iowa accepted Waverly as a participant in the Certified Local Government Program, was formed under the provisions of Section 101(c) of the National Historic Preservation Act. And now, therefore, we, mayor and city council of the city of Waverly, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as National Preservation Month and call upon the people of the city of Waverly to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. In witness thereof, I have herein to subscribe my name, Adam P. Hoffman, mayor, to be affixed as 26th day of April 2021. Entertain a motion to approve the proclamation as read.
I will move that we approve the proclamation as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Drinkow. Any council discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Perfect segue into Section E, the Study Session Calendar. Item one is the Historic Preservation Commission update. And I see that we're joined by a few people connected to that commission and their trustee leader, Karen Lehman.
Well, thank you. Yes, I am Karen Lehman, and I am the chair of the Waverly Historic Preservation Commission. And we would like to thank you very much for issuing that proclamation that has become an annual event and is particularly special this year because it's our 25th anniversary. Thanks for the opportunity to present and update you about everything that's been going on with the commission since we were last here in June 2020. Considering we have not seen each other in person this entire time, we've had a very productive year. And Paul Amor from the State Historic Preservation Office just joined our meeting that we had right before this one. It was our monthly meeting, and she was very complimentary about what we've managed to accomplish during a difficult year. We have continued to move forward. As you know, because Isaac Pezley, our city liaison, came to you in March and presented our Certified Local Government Annual Report. So you've heard quite a bit about preservation, and in the future, it has been suggested that we combine, in the meeting where he sums up the annual report, we will try to come and do the annual update at the same time as makes probably a lot of sense. So there's a thought for the future. I would like to introduce our current commissioners. On this call, we have, well, our vice chair is Chris Brunkhorst, who I see has joined us. We also have Don Meyer, who has joined us, and I believe Glenn Feniman is here. And in addition to those people, we have Mary Meyer, and then we, as of last July 1, added Darius Robinson and Justin Jeffcoat Sheddler. Brian Bergen is our city liaison, and Isaac is our Waverly, or, excuse me, Brian's our council liaison, and Isaac is our city liaison. And I would also like to thank, give great and major thanks for her invaluable assistance to Paige Yoder. She's the Economic Development Office Coordinator, and she has worked so closely with and is so helpful to us. So, this is our 25th anniversary. We were created in 1996, as the mayor pointed out. And in your packet, I believe you received a list of the commissioners over the years and the city liaisons and so on. Hopefully, there are no omissions in that. If anybody thinks of someone, roll on down. I think it's the last thing in there. Yep, okay. If you discover we've left anybody off, it's a work in progress. So that's everyone who's been involved since the very beginning.
At the very bottom, you have city liaisons. You don't have Isaac on there.
Well, there we go. We will remedy that immediately after this meeting. We also sent you a timetable of milestones for the commission, so if you want to find that, it's in the... Oh, that was a separate document. That came separately. So is that available for you to get to? Yeah, it's the... No, next one down. There we go. It's truly amazing what has happened in the last 25 years. 25 years of preservation, promotion, and pride. Five pages of a wide variety of things that have happened. And just to sort of sum up what you're seeing as he rolls through that, we're very proud of our many accomplishments, and they include things like national and local awards, like historic districts or honoring significant sites and properties, publications such as our article that was in a National Preservation Journal. We've done many presentations locally and at conferences, and eventually, we hope to add more public educational forums here in Waverly on preservation topics, once we get back to where we can meet in person inside in a large group. And we've had many public celebrations and operate, opportunities to celebrate historic preservation as a commission. We have a new logo, and I think we'll, if you want to go back to the other page, we'll be moving toward that other page again in a minute. So we do have a logo that has been suggested to us as a marketing plan that came up, and we worked with Warburg just in time to celebrate our 25 years. Why don't you go back to showing the people again? We'll come back to this site, because I'm not going to talk about these things quite at this minute. So let's shut down the added things. Yeah, there we go. Okay, I'll just hold up our logo right now. So it's the same as the brown historic preservation signs, but we put words on it, and we are using it in all sorts of communications. So it's nice to have a logo at last of our own. So we're happy to get that completed. Okay, so the next Preserve Iowa Summit will be a Zoom summit from Council Bluffs, and it's going to be June 3 to 5, and I think we'll have at least three commissioners attend. Annually, participating in some kind of sponsored training is required by at least one person in a CLG every year, and that Preserve Iowa Summit has been a wonderful opportunity for us. So that will be coming up. Okay, we have an action plan every year, and since we're spilling over two calendar years, our 2020 action plan and our 2021, I'm going to hit the highlights of the four categories that we have established, that we take action steps in, and then we make goals under each of those four categories. So the first of those is to increase the footprint of historic preservation in the community. We have continued to expand our online presence in a variety of ways. Our website is in continual progress, and we are always trying to make sure that it gives current information about the awards, about the activities, and so forth. We're working on developing more influence on social media sites and other outreach. And the new logo is an example of something that goes with that. If you haven't looked at our website lately, following this meeting, there will be several new things that will get added because there are things that we're going to talk about tonight. One of the most time-intensive tasks about increasing our footprint in the community since we last spoke with you has been our work to appropriately honor Waverly's historic and architecturally significant Third Street Southeast Bridge, also known over time as the Harmon Street Bridge and the Green Bridge. So just to sum that up briefly, at the instigation of the City Council, our commission was asked for suggestions, what would be about the best way to honor that bridge. We researched and presented proposals to the council, and then the council selected several priorities. Funds have been allocated to complete signage and a bronze plaque. They'll go in two locations, South Riverside Park and Brookside Park. We also have commissioned some public art that will be added after we have a successful fundraising campaign. The planned public art is called Visionary Sightseeing Binoculars. It's a stereoscope, which looks like a very large artistic set of binoculars that contain historic and contemporary photos of the bridge. And now for the official announcement. The campaign to raise additional funds to help us create this public art project in addition to the signs and the plaques begins this week. So we established this in collaboration with the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa. They have helped us create a website for this campaign. They've created a flyer, which you actually got a copy of, and you also got a copy of a press release that will be going out starting tomorrow to a wide variety of media in the Cedar Valley to announce that we are having this campaign. We also have applied for a grant to assist in funding the public art, and there are, there is the possibility of additional grants should that become necessary. So we will continue to update you about the process, the progress of this project, and here's my public appeal. If you're interested in donating to our campaign to honor the Green Bridge, please go to our website, which will be out in all this media and on our webpage, but it's called fund.cfnea, which is the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa initials, dot org slash greenbridge. So please go to that website and read information about our intentions, and we would appreciate your donation very much. Thank you. Okay, the second of our action steps is maintain and develop relationships with local entities. We continue to deepen our relationship with the Waverly Public Library all the time. We do extensive research there. We utilize their digitized photographs. They help us highlight and promote different activities and events. In fact, there's going to be a display there in May that I'll mention in a moment. We also work collaboratively with the Chamber of Commerce to publicize our activities, and we have worked with them and will continue to work to develop historic signage around town and to encourage heritage tourism, which is the fancy word for when people come to town and want to look at historic things. They call it heritage tourism. A new project that we are working on, that we've been a little restricted because of the pandemic, we would like to connect more with local businesses so that we can increase the community's historic knowledge. And the way we're going, that we are going to do that is, when we can, we are going to put table tents in local restaurants that talk about historic Waverly architecture and possibly some vanished sites of interest in Waverly. So basically, on the table tents, one side would talk about the historic information and photos, and the other side, if it's a contemporary thing, would show contemporary photos and talk about it currently. So the whole idea is to hook citizens and visitors on local history one table at a time. Okay, the third of our action steps is to explore designation of additional Waverly historic districts or creation of additional awards or honorifics that talk about historic preservation. As you know from the past, we did do a drive-by survey in the northeast quadrant to see about historic districts. That project went on hold because we have been very involved in the time-intensive bridge honoring project this year. And also, with our annual budget of $750, we can't do any major projects without grants or extra allocations, which have already been made toward the bridge in this current year. So we've been focusing on giving local awards and creating local signs. For example, there will be the informational sign that you, that the council approved at a recent meeting on the corner by Four Queens, where those chairs are sitting, that describes the history of that corner, which has a significant history because there was a livery stable, then there was the Rock Island Depot, and of course, now there's Four Queens and many other businesses in between. So we researched and designed that for the Streetscape project. Another thing we're doing to be involved in historic districts, Warburg College is applying to become a historic district. The Warburg Historic District would go on the National Register of Historic Places, and if that's accepted, then we would have our three neighborhood districts, our commercial downtown district and the Warburg district with a potential northeast district at some point in the future. And of course, we would help Waverly with the signage, getting the brown and blue signs in all the appropriate places once that district is actually official, which they're hoping to do over the next year. So we're excited about that. Another future project is to sort of reinvigorate what was named the Historic Location Markers Program. That was a program that we developed in 2008, and the intention was to commemorate locations of existing or no longer existing sites of historical significance, sort of like a vanished landmarks program. And you know what happened in 2008? So once we proposed that idea, it has been in the back of our minds ever since, but nothing has really been done about it. So once we started looking into what have we done over 25 years, we realized we need to relaunch that concept and move forward with that. So hopefully, over the next year, that is something we will be able to do. As far as awards and honors that we did give in 2020, 21, we gave a Waverly Historic Preservation Award in 2020 to Scott and Linda Kolinkark's home, which is at 415 Fourth Avenue Southeast. That's the award that recognizes a commitment to preserve a property. And we also selected two properties to be placed on the Waverly Historic Register. In 2020, we selected the original Waverly High School, which is now Crosspoint Church. And we, in 2021, selected the Rock Island Depot, which is now Four Queens Dairy Cream owned by Mark Nagel. So those are to recognize architecturally or historically significant sites in the community. So we've given three awards, and what we will do about that comes up in our fourth and final action step area, which is to collaborate, to host and promote National Historic Preservation Month, which is May every year. So we're launching into that next week. We're always looking for ways to bring historic preservation to the community's attention, and that's a natural one. So our plans in May include, the mayor has just done the proclamation, so thanks again. We're going to put displays up at the Waverly Public Library now that that is reopened. We have posters that describe the downtown historic buildings. The last time we put up a display, it was the posters of all the historic homes that have won awards. This time, it will be about downtown buildings. So please do, sometime in May, stop by the library and see these displays. We also will be doing media, a media blitz of all sorts of things on historic preservation, including talking about our 25th anniversary, et cetera. We continue to provide for $10 donations, the 1868 Waverly Historic Bird's Eye View maps. And just to refresh your mind, this is what they were, the historic poster maps of Waverly. And they're available at a variety of places around town, including they are at the Chamber, at the Public Library, at Renewed Purpose, at the Golden Thistle, VR website from the city. And as we get donations for more of those, we will put that into the fundraising for the bridge project. Due to difficulties with public gatherings, we are not going to have a public forum this year, but we are going to have, and this is where I wish you would show that again, whoever was showing the stuff, let's show the poster for the official gathering we're about to have. Okay, thank you. We're going to celebrate historic preservation on May 22nd by having an outdoor event in South Riverside Park at the Farmers' Exchange Building. That's next to the fire station, for those of you that don't call it by that name, and that's on First Street Southwest, by the way. From 9:00 to noon, we'll be having an open house with tours at the Farmers' Exchange Building and some displays inside, perhaps showing some historic pictures of that building. Crosspoint Church decided to dovetail with this. They're going to offer public tours. I know they did it one time previously, and they're going to do it again from 9:00 to 10:30 on May 22nd in the morning, so people can go look at their historic building now reconstructed. And then at 11:00 AM, there will be a public program where we will give awards to the people, to Four Queens and Crosspoint and the Kolinkarks for their preservation work. And then we will have treats sponsored by Four Queens Dairy Cream. So lots of things going on in that neighborhood, which is basically on the edge of the Sturdivant Historic District. We will be offering walking tours that morning to people that are interested. We'll have the brochures available. They're also on our website. They're also at the Chamber and the Library. So anybody who would like to walk around, we will be putting signs up in the yards of all the historic homes in the Sturdivant area. The Bramer County Historical Museum will be open. The Iris Sturdivant House will be open, and we are talking to the fire station to see if their museum can be open, assuming they have enough personnel available. So all of those different things will be happening to, to, shall we say, announce the opening of the new shelter house in the Farmers' Exchange Building, which was originally had a weight scale and was an office building constructed in the 1930s. We gave an award to that building, actually, in 2015, and we got a plaque for them in 2016, but because they were working on the building, that didn't happen, and we were going to do the open house in 2019, but they weren't finished with the construction, 2020, you know what happened. So 2021, we're going to celebrate a whole lot of things rolled into one fun time with the program at 11:00 AM. Okay, so in spite of pandemic restrictions, we've had a very productive commission. We're proud to reach the milestone of 25 years. We appreciate the opportunity to share our accomplishments and plans with the City Council and the community, and we'd like to thank you for 25 great years with more to come. Any questions?
Thank you very much for, you know, that very thorough rundown of everything. I will have to give my apologies for not being able to make it on May 22nd. I do have another obligation that day out of town, so otherwise, I would be there. Any questions from anyone on council? All right, thank you very much, Karen, and everybody else that joined us from Historic Preservation this evening. All right, we will move forward to item number two, Economic Development Commission update. I believe Mr. Nagley is on tonight, or who do we got? There he is. You're muted, sir. You're still muted, sir.
You probably are going to regret that.
There you go.
Sorry about that. That's the most frequent comment on Zoom, by the way. You're muted, you're still muted.
We'll give you a pass. Thank you for joining us.
Well, I am the current, uh, uh, point person on the commission, the chair of the commission. Well, I am the current point person on the commission, the chair of the commission. And with me tonight on the screen is Paula Geis, one of our newest commissioners. And I don't know, it's probably an hallucination, but I thought I saw Gene Lee pass through the panels, did I? I mean, if you're around Gene and you have something to contribute, he's a longtime member of the commission, feel free to pop in and supplement what I have to say. But I, we just want to give our update for including you in on what we spent 2020 doing. And to begin with, I just want to acquaint you with the commission. I think we have a sheet with the Economic Development Commission. This is updated. No, it's not updated. So this shows actually who was on the commission in 2020. And as you may, you I'm sure are familiar, most of you, there are nine voting members on the, on the commission, and they are listed there along with the areas of the community that they are involved with. And it does indicate that Brittany, who was last year's chair, Brittany Dirks has departed, I think, job reassignment, and Paula Stevenson was her vice chair last year. She completed her term. And Mark Hannawell has gone off. And we have made two replacements. Paula, I mentioned to you, CEO at Bartles, and Darren Westendorf, Kuna Mutual Group, head of that group in Waverly. And we have an open seat, and I'm sure you're familiar, that's something that the mayor has the authority to make the invitations to add to, and I think we'll be happy to make any suggestions. What we try to do is have a broad representation of the sectors of the economy in Waverly. That's certainly something taken into account. You can see we have eight non-voting members, and that was done some years ago in the interest of broadening the breadth of the, of the commission to give it more reach in the community and more opportunity for various parts of the community to have a voice. They're not voting, but when you, if you attend the meetings, you would never tell by the discussion who's voting and who's not voting, although if we pass something on to council, we make sure we have a vote of a majority of the voting members. But we've had very good success with this group in attendance and participation. The non-voting is simply to allow additional people who may be concerned that they can't necessarily be there every time or be there to have a, have a voting responsibility, still feel free to participate and include their, their part of the community in the discussion. And then, of course, we have our ex-official members, city administrator, Mr. Bronner, and Connie and Bill from the commission staff, and Mayor Adam, and Adam is our city council liaison, and that's to ensure that all aspects of the city government have a direct link to the, to the committee and access to our discussion and, and our, our information. So been around for a while, as many of you know, maybe all of you know, Waverly was the leader in establishing a separate entity to deal with economic development. That occurred back in the mid 80s. And when it first occurred, it was not even a part of the city government. It was individuals, businesses, people interested in Waverly, got together as a private group and raised some money and hired a director. You may recall Roger Stevenson, those of you who have been around for a while. He was our initial and fairly long-term director of that group. But that was a, that was an organization formed in hard times. The mid 80s were not a pretty picture in rural economies, and ours included, and people were concerned that we needed to take concerted action, direct action focused on making sure that our community was growing. And so they began that way and morphed through a few different conflagrations, but then ended up being part of the city, and that's been the way it's been for a while. But we were a leader in understanding. We were among the very first communities in the state, including places like Des Moines and Cedar Rapids, much larger places. So I think we showed early on, and I think we can look back and say, I'm glad we did. We, we've learned a lot through the years. This is no easy business, how to, how to produce growth, what will produce growth, where will it come from, how do you recognize it, your opportunities? And I think we've learned a lot. So that's who we are, and that's what we try to do. And I just want to briefly indicate that 2020 was certainly a difficult year, as Karen pointed out, it was for their commission. But at the opening of 2020, we had several projects on our plate, one of which was the Community Marketing Initiative, which became the Welcome Home Campaign, and we're now getting into that. But that was, that had begun to be conceived and worked out at that time, and that was one of our responsibilities for this last year. The Waverly Historic Losses were nearing completion and the era of marketing, and so that was something we wanted to make sure got completed this last year. We did a housing needs assessment, and I know council was, shared that, and we, I think InterCog was our advisor in regards to that, and felt it was time to update our, our assessment of available housing. And we'll talk about that a little more later as we dealt with that later in the year. Expanding childcare was a great growing concern that we, that a lot of aspects of the community wanted to focus on, the ability to try to generate more facilities to assist our working men and women with the care of their children. And, and that, that became recognized as a need. And, and then streetscape was to be finally able to be completed as we got the bridge decked done and opened and could move on to the phase of adding the amenities to downtown that you see most every day, I think, traveling through downtown Waverly. And then Whitetail Bluff Housing Subdivision was something that was being developed and processed through city and initiated. And that was, those were all things that we started out with. And we certainly were impacted and interrupted some by COVID. We did not, we, we did not have a meeting in March, April, and May because of that, although we did get reports from the staff every month, and, and we, we just were, we were sort of taken aside as far as being able to meet. But then in June, we began meeting by Zoom, and we were able to discuss the, the housing, the development of the housing study and as that was coming on, and some of the information that came out of that as far as giving us housing permit numbers, inventory updates, things of that nature. So that was still rolling. Bill also reported to us in June, the Red Fox Inn was, we were, the city was getting near the point where title to that property could be turned over to the city, which would enable them to take a look for developers interested in developing that site. And that, so that started in June. And of course, we always, in our meetings, considered COVID, talked about what we knew of how the community was, was faring, how businesses were faring, what we could do, kept that on our, on our, on our plate. And then Connie reported to us on the Community Marketing Initiative in that June meeting, but that we would, of course, be delaying the, the, bringing that out until things were more stable and, and we knew better what the future looked like. So then in August, the housing assessments, needs assessment was completed by InterCog and reflecting the fact that, that we had particularly a need to focus on rental housing and perhaps more reasonably priced or moderately priced, single-family housing or housing of different densities to allow people to, Waverly to be an affordable place for people to live. And that, that report came before council at that time, too. So we, we've had that resource now available to us. We'll continue, as you'll see when we just briefly list our current year projects, that that's something that we'll be focusing on. And then in September, we, we actually, the, the city did get to the point where title to the Red Fox property could be turned over to it, and they were seeking developers. And we had a couple of very good developer prospects show interest and participate in presenting possibilities for developing that property. Paula knows that well because Bartle was one of those places that showed an interest. And then the, another Midwest development company, 1859 Ventures, also presented a project, which, as you know now, has led to the, to a development agreement. So we were able to get that project to an actual commencement. By, by the end of the year, the developer was eager to be able to get in and get started with some critical things they wanted to get done before winter happened. They were able to do that, and we'll now be looking as we go forward this year to when they feel they're at a point where it would be appropriate for them to come back and tell us all, you know, how, how the project is unfolding. So we'll be doing that. And let's see. Also, in the November and December meetings, we recognized that we felt it was time for the commission to do some kind of a study of its activities, assess itself as it's progressed over the years, determine how we should best focus to go forward, and that we would want to have discussions with the council to make sure that we were in agreement with that, that we identified a common direction. And so we were able to do that. And the city has, I, I think we are lined up this coming year, in the second half of the year, to, with the leadership of the Institute for Decision Making at the University of Northern Iowa, have them lead us and work with us and council to work toward a five-year plan, a strategic plan for the commission, and make sure that we are all on that same page, as much as, as much as you can be. I, we've been through a few five-year plans over the years. They're, they're essential, they're good. You have to have a sense of direction, a commitment to where you want to head, but even if you do, it isn't easy, as we, as we all know. This is no simple business, how, how you move forward and, and finding partners to do it with. And, and so, again, I think showing that a community that does not have a focal point that's focused on this all the time is really at a disadvantage in trying to make sure that they make the most of their economic development opportunities. So basically, that's, that's what I got. Anybody have any questions about any of those projects or where they stand? And of course, we're just an advisory group, so anything that we do, in consequence, gets back through the council anyway. So you will be hearing about it when the time comes. And is there anything on your minds that you want me to convey back to the commission at this time? Or just let you get on to the next report? There's always that.
I kind of have a question. So Steve, I wanted to ask, we have this development project being planned for the former Washington Irving School area, and I wanted to know what, what, what work you've done on that and where you see that one headed?
Yeah, I, I don't know how I missed that. That's part of the, the picture here. Bill came to us, and Connie came to us back in, you know, early summer or something, and talking about possible Irving site because it's out of the flood plain, it's, it's out of the 100-year flood plain, it's available for development. It's a, you know, and I know, I'm sure you're, you're familiar with the parcel, the dry run goes through there, so it's, so the dry run has done its job, taken away the flood concerns. The part that we're talking about for development would be on the west, you know, it's more than half, that kind of, the dry run kind of circles through there, and it's maybe two-thirds of the, of the area that we're talking about, that we, we think, we would like to find out if developers would be interested in dovetailing with our housing study, possibly some, some more dense housing there, develop it as condos or townhomes or something of that nature rather than separate lots. We think we could do more. And this also dovetails with the fact that it's, you know, its location is such, it's just off of the West Side Main Street. And we know the reason we were interested in doing the loss project and the upper story stuff is that if you get people back in the, in the commercial area, it really is helpful to business there and increases activity there. It's also connected here to trails and other amenities in the community. So we think it's a very attractive spot. We're going to look into it. We had a, a meeting with members of the community this last week, and good return on that, some very good questions. Of course, they would just love to keep the green space, maybe and not be bothered by any neighbors or whatever, but we may want to get that on the grant, on the, on the tax roll. And it really has a lot of added value for the, for the downtown area, I think. So Bill, what can you add?
I'll just say that that's going to be coming up. We'll have lots of things coming before this, the council and before the groups that will review it again, so.
Yeah, and the, we would need to deal with zoning in that area, whether it would be appropriate for whatever it was, nature of housing that we wanted to promote. So that would have to come through planning and zoning and, and all that. So I, I think it's, I'm very excited about it. Any other questions on that or anything else?
Steve, I've got a question, and maybe it, it just went past me here, but you're talking about working with the Institute for Strategic Development at UNI to work on developing a five-year plan. Will the city council members be involved in that?
Yes. Yes, and there's a brochure on it that I, has this been distributed or available to the council, the, the Waverly Economic Development Proposal for the strategic planning? There's, 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 this outlines the process. It would be about a, a, a half-year process, and it would certainly involve the council.
Absolutely. Before the end.
I've seen, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I've seen that document. I don't, Carla, do you recall if that was in a previous packet? But I would like to take a peek at that again. I don't know if Steve or if you have it, if we could.
I'm going to hold it up.
If we could get it disseminated out to council, it would be great.
I think we have it in the, in the, you guys have it, don't you, Bill?
We'll distribute that.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nagley.
My pleasure.
For that, I also want to just thank the members of that commission for the service that they provide and for new people stepping up as people have stepped down, stepped away, that type of thing. So that's what keeps these commissions. And like I said, there's that one opening still. I don't believe I'm standing on any applications right now.
Right.
So as the commission looks at that and other people that may be watching or know somebody that may be interested, have them fill out the application on the boards and commissions page to the cities website.
Glad to do it, mayor. And I think it's really important if we're going to go through that planning process to get somebody on board that can be part of that. So, but we don't start that second half of the year, we've got some time.
Yep, we still need to get them oriented and up to speed, so.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yep. All right, move forward.
All right. Move forward into item number three. Mr. Tolliver's joined us for the Chamber of Commerce update.
Yes. Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for, for having us. Thank you for being able to put us on the agenda and, uh, members of the council. Thanks for giving us a, a brief moment of your time. Uh, I'm joined here by 2021 Board Chair Don Meyer, who you've seen earlier in the, uh, the Historic Preservation Commission update as well. And, uh, and I'm also happy to be, uh, to say that the chamber does enjoy having a great relationship with the Historic Preservation Commission on all their efforts. Uh, of course, with our Main Street program and those historic, uh, efforts as well, kind of, uh, run parallel with theirs. So it's a, it's a great partnership. Uh, and then also too, to, to work with Steve and other members of the Economic Development Commission, uh, as a non-voting member, uh, it's a privilege to, to meet with those folks, uh, once a month and, and get to, uh, to work on some of the, the CD initiatives. So, uh, happy to be here. Uh, just wanted to, uh, give you a, a, a brief update, uh, with the, the chamber and our progress for the year. Uh, I did email all of you, um, a, a dashboard that I created, uh, to better help assess and track our progresses throughout the year, uh, and, and certainly hope you're able to, to take, take a chance to, to look at that. Uh, Don and I will be focusing on the first page only, uh, with respect to your time this evening. But, uh, do encourage you, if you have any questions or anything else about, uh, some of the other activities going on in our other committees and different events and whatnot, uh, please feel free to, to, to let us know. We'd be happy to, to answer those questions. And again, this is just a, um, uh, another way we're trying to, to better the communications between our two organizations. And so meeting with you on a, on a quarterly basis, uh, through your study session, I, I think is, is going to be very helpful. So looking forward to that. So, um, Bill, I don't know if I can share my screen or if you will share it. I can do it? Okay. Fantastic.
Should be able to.
Great. So just taking a look here at the, um, at the dashboard that I sent you. Uh, first of all, we're a volunteer-driven organization. And so, uh, it's, uh, wonderful for us to be able to track, uh, volunteers and how they donate their time and, and what that's worth. So currently, right now for 2021, we have 81 volunteers. These are committee members. These are, uh, board members, uh, even our intern, uh, from Wharfburg, who is not paid, is volunteering his time. Uh, and, uh, and certainly with the volunteers that help us develop our different events, uh, throughout the calendar year. So right now, we're currently holding at 285 hours of donated time from those, uh, from those folks. And that's calculated at a value of, uh, just under $8,000. Uh, we subscribe to a, uh, to a, a website called independentsector.com. And these folks actually calculate out, uh, and, and publish on a national basis what the value is of a, of a volunteer and what their, uh, what their hourly value is worth. And so at $27.20 an hour, uh, that's what that calculation comes out to be. Our key statistics right now, uh, looking at new business members, in 2020, we had 19 new business members, which, you know, I thought was great, given that we were in the middle of a pandemic and, uh, the, the year was not slated to, to go very well. Uh, but our goal for 2021 is obviously to have more than that. And we're currently holding right now at 14. So, uh, we're well on our way to, to, uh, getting, uh, more, uh, members in 2021 than we had, uh, last year. So excited to keep that number growing and, uh, retaining our businesses as well. We're at 98% right now. Uh, we just did a huge, huge call to all of our members to thank them for being members, uh, to, uh, seek any interest or, or needed value for their membership with the chamber. And also too, to, uh, get any kind of updated, uh, contact information from them so that we can, um, publish our annual, uh, membership directory, which we do through our friends at the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier. Uh, that will be coming out, uh, I believe later on this week. Uh, so watch your, watch your mailers. Uh, it'll be coming out, goes about 40, 45,000 homes and businesses throughout the Cedar Valley. And so that's a wonderful way for us to be able to, uh, spread the good news of Waverly and the businesses that we have here through that, uh, showcase piece, uh, that they helped publish for us. And so be looking that, for that real soon. But that has all of our, uh, members', uh, contact information through, uh, category index and an alphabetical index. And then certainly advertisements for all the wonderful businesses that we have here in the community. Uh, we do that on a yearly basis. And then we also publish our visitor's guide, which is our tourism piece on a bi-annual basis. And that is due for a, a revamp this year. And so we're looking forward to having that published through the Waverly newspapers, uh, later on this year. Chamber Champions, which is our individual investors, this is a, uh, program that, uh, uh, Don Meyer, uh, championed last year as a way to engage, uh, community members that, uh, may want to get involved with the chamber, that may be retired, maybe they're, uh, working for a business that is currently not a member of the chamber, uh, or just, you know, people that volunteer that want to, that want to be more involved and help out. So, uh, right now, uh, in 2020, we had 20, uh, Chamber Champions, uh, join our, our, our organization. And, and currently in, in the first quarter, we have an additional 27. And so looking forward to, uh, to having more folks, uh, throughout the community, uh, join the chamber, uh, and be engaged that way. And then finally, tracking for the first time, our real, our, our engaged business visits. And, and again, I, I say engaged because these aren't just visits where I, you know, maybe pop into a business and, uh, and say hi during an event and then walk out. I mean, this is actually really walking in and saying hi, asking questions, uh, seeing, uh, if there's any, anything that the chamber can be helping with, uh, asking for, you know, any input from the business on, on what we can be doing better or what, uh, what successes they've had that we can help promote, those kinds of things. And so currently right now, uh, sitting at 35 engaged, um, business visits, uh, my goal is to hit 100 by the end of the year. I think I'm going to do that fairly easily. And with that being said, I definitely want to invite, uh, all council members, uh, to join Mayor Hoffman and I, uh, this Friday, the 30th, uh, from 10 to noon, we're going to be, uh, we're going to be walking the streets and, 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 uh, meeting with some businesses and just walking in and just doing just that, asking questions, seeing how business is going, uh, post-pandemic or, or as we are coming out of a pandemic, um, and certainly seeing if there's ways that we can, we can help businesses, uh, during this time. It's just a really great way to, to, to network, to keep the pulse in the community. And I'm really excited that Mayor Hoffman will be, be joining me. But also too, want to certainly invite, uh, members of council to join us as well. So again, 10 to noon on Friday, the 30th, uh, meet me here at the chamber office and, uh, and get your walking shoes because we're going to, we're walk out, up and down the street and have some, have some fun talking with some businesses. So for, uh, the rest of this sheet here on the first page, uh, these are our overall, uh, organizational goals that we've laid out for 2021. These are, um, these are what our board of directors has said that we want to get done, uh, for this year. Some of them, uh, you will see that, uh, you know, we've completed, but other, other things are still in progress. And some of these will probably spill over into future years as well, and particularly wayfinding, which we'll start off with. And, uh, the point person for our wayfinding project is, is Don Meyer. Uh, he is committed to, uh, to, to being, uh, the, the, the leader for, for that, uh, that project. And so I'll turn things over to him to give you an update of where we're at with wayfinding.
Thanks Travis. We're very excited to announce that we've, we've launched, uh, the first step in this wayfinding project, and that is to, uh, hire a consultant to help us put together a wayfinding plan. And, uh, our, our wayfinding committee includes Connie Tolan from Economic Development, Paula Stevenson and Kristen Boll, two members from our chamber board, uh, and myself. And our committee also has consulted with James Broner and Bill Werder as we finalize the RFP, uh, that was just sent out last, uh, Monday on April 19th. And so we're asking for the submissions to, uh, 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 come back to us by May 21st. Our committee will then review those, uh, RFPs, uh, and, uh, have a firm selected by June 21st. Then, um, the idea is to have the, uh, the wayfinding plan put together by the first of November in the hope that we would have a good idea of what the budget would, uh, include for that project. So we could have it ready for the 22, 23, uh, budget. So that's where we're at. With that, uh, we're excited to see this, uh, starting to roll out. And I've already had, uh, several inquiries. Uh, I think we'll have, uh, a good response to our RFP.
Great. Thank you, Don. Um, the next item is downtown design guidelines, uh, which, uh, is, is being, uh, worked on by our design committee. Uh, Paula Stevenson, who was mentioned earlier, is, uh, the chair of that committee. And so, uh, right now they have completed researching, are gathering all their research from different, uh, communities throughout Iowa who have put together design guidelines for their downtown districts. Uh, and now they're in the, the, um, process of kind of reviewing all that and compiling all that information and starting to put it into a, a document, uh, that would then, uh, be approved, uh, by the committee and, and be shared with, um, with building owners, uh, and, and, and developers, people that are looking to, uh, they possibly make some changes to their, to their, the historic, uh, buildings in downtown. And it, it's just ag- again, a document that will help, uh, guide, uh, building owners to be able to understand what kind of downtown we'd like to have as far as, uh, the historic nature of these buildings, uh, you know, preserving the brickwork or, you know, helping to, to reinforce that, uh, the kind of signage, the kind of, uh, uh, just facades, uh, that, that make, um, really great downtowns like ours look even better. And so, uh, we're really excited to, to be, uh, continuing the work on that project. New images and video footage, uh, we have hired, uh, a photographer and videographer. Uh, actually it's, uh, Roland Ferris from, from Wharfburg College. He is their official videographer. And we've hired him, uh, to, to take, uh, images on a slew of different events throughout the, the year. Uh, the first one coming up will be Art Walk, uh, on Saturday, May 1st. Uh, and I would encourage all of you to, to come out for that. It's going to be a wonderful event out at Coleman Park, a, a juried art show of about 33, 34 vendors, along with some food and some strolling music. Uh, we're spacing everybody out so they feel comfortable. We're asking people to wear masks so that we feel comfortable. But again, uh, just a, an opportunity for all of us to gather as a community out, uh, in the park and, and enjoy some art. But, uh, he will be out there, uh, foot, uh, photographing and, and taking some video of, um, of, of, of that event. And our focus, uh, for, for him is to not only capture the event, but also too, to capture, uh, moments of community, moments where, uh, you see children enjoying themselves, a family walking down the sidewalk, those kinds of things. Uh, these are images that we can, uh, use to better promote Waverly through our tourism efforts and certainly through, um, our, our shared project of Waverly Welcome Home. Uh, and so we're, we're looking forward to getting some of those images back, uh, after the, the event and, uh, getting them branded and then get, uh, then putting them on a, a shareable, uh, drive, uh, with, uh, Connie and Bill so that, uh, the Waverly Welcome Home, uh, website can utilize them just as much as, as the chamber can. So looking forward, uh, to, to that. Our, uh, uh, next, uh, action plan would be, uh, new social media platforms. We wanted to expand our, our social media presence. We have a really great, uh, footing on Facebook right now. I've got a lot of followers on that, on that platform, but we wanted to, to do more. So, uh, we've re-engaged our, our platforms in, in LinkedIn and on YouTube. Uh, we have these pages and profiles set up before, but we weren't really engaging with them like we should. And so we have, uh, done that. We've, uh, been adding some video to, to our YouTube channels, uh, been, uh, posting more, uh, business-type postings on our LinkedIn page. And so we encourage you to check those out, follow those. Uh, we'd really like to have your help with that. And again, just another great way of, of distributing, uh, uh, the, the wonderful things that we're doing here in Waverly. And then, uh, also adding an Instagram account. Uh, and, uh, I, I, I will be honest, I don't Instagram a lot. Uh, but luckily I work with people that do. And so we've been able to add an Instagram account. We're excited to be, uh, engaging on that platform a little bit more, uh, as we get used to, uh, to having that in our arsenal as well. So Facebook is really the, the best platform for us because it reaches all kinds of demographics. But, uh, having these other platforms too, will just, uh, enhance the, 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 the exposure of our, of our organization and Waverly for sure. And then finally, uh, our last, uh, action item that we wanted to focus on tonight was the bridge closure event schedule. Uh, it's our understanding that the DOT has, uh, moved that schedule back a year, uh, which, uh, I think we see as a positive for our community and certainly for our businesses that are going to be impacted by that, uh, that bridge closure, uh, to the fall of '23 and '24. Uh, so we're really excited to, uh, keep, continuing having discussions, even though that has been delayed for a year, just continue having discussions with our downtown businesses and start working out a plan to, to better attract, uh, people to downtown, uh, when that bridge is out and how we can best, um, utilize, uh, resources and, and whatnot to, to, to make it, uh, a destination, more of a destination than it is right now, uh, given the fact that it's going to take, uh, just a little bit longer to, to get to downtown than it normally would. We're going to invite people to take the scenic routes, uh, to get to downtown during that closure. Uh, but, uh, we're really excited. Hopefully be maybe adding some different events. Maybe it's live music, maybe it's, uh, a kid's, a kid's night or something. Uh, we'll be having these discussions, uh, throughout the rest of the year and, and hopefully being able to draft up a schedule of events and then, uh, be able to execute them when the time comes. So, uh, that's really the update from the chamber. Uh, certainly would welcome any questions you might have. Let me stop sharing my screen so I can see all of you again. And, um, and thank you again for, for your time this evening.
Travis, I have a question. And I'm sorry, my internet's kind of unstable right now. So, um, but my question with, uh, downtown designs.
Yeah.
Um, I have a couple of citizen questions for that. Um, are these design, um, design standards going to be recommendations or requirements for downtown?
Yeah. And so that's why they're called design guidelines because they are just to help guide, uh, building owners. Uh, standards seem to be too aggressive of a word. Um, and, uh, we, we just don't feel like we should have to force, uh, anything on anyone. So, uh, you know, quite a bit we get building owners that come to us asking for input or, or help with regards to their buildings. And we just want to be able to have a document that we can share with them that says, here, here's some best practices. Here are some, some thoughts that, that might help you with your, your building. And certainly through Main Street Iowa, we have the ability to, um, to have design assistance, uh, for free to, to any building owner in the downtown district, uh, that would like to do something with facade work or maybe some improvements on the inside. Uh, those folks, uh, they have a professional design team that will come out and assess the building, uh, outside, inside, whatever, and be able to, to help offer some more in-depth ideas, uh, with, with those discussions. So no, it's guy, guiding, yes. Standards, r- requirements, no.
Thanks for all that Travis. I don't have a question really, uh, comment. Actually it is a question. Is that an Electro Voice or a, uh, Shure 58? That is a great microphone, by the way. So that, that's on that.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
All in Z100 here tonight.
No, this is actually, uh, my, my new toy. It's a Morantz Professional Pod Pack One, uh, and just using it for, uh, be- better sound, but as we do our, uh, Commerce Over Coffee, uh, webinars. So.
It sounds good. Sounds good on the.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody else can answer any other questions?
I'm really looking forward to our time on Friday and then future opportunities to, to get with, um, the chamber and, uh, hop into some businesses. And, um, it's one of the, the things that we've consistently heard over the last few years is just, uh, you know, what is being told to the chamber and what's being told to people in the public and that kind of thing. So this is essentially, you know, kind of that, uh, checks and balances that I hope to be able to walk away and be able to say, no, what the, the chamber is reporting to you, uh, what the business temperature is, is exactly that. Um, and there, it's another avenue that they can, um, connect with the city, uh, and the council. So I do encourage any other council members that if that works into your schedule, um, by all means, feel free to join us. And the, the Grand Blue Mile is still going on so we can get some, some steps in on that.
There you go. Yeah, absolutely. Um, and, and I will say too, that it also helps to resolidify our partnership, uh, in front of our, our businesses. So to see the mayor and the chamber director, uh, visiting businesses and certainly city council members, you're welcome as well, uh, just helps to solidify that. So thank you, Mayor, for, for being willing to do that. And, and before I forget too, Don, is there anything else that you'd like to mention before we, before we end our time here with the council?
No, you have covered it. Thanks.
And I'm sure that those opportunities for us, you know, hitting the street will not always be Friday morning at that time. We'll look at some afternoons and stuff. That just happened to be the first opportunity that worked on our schedules together. So.
Yep. Yep. Absolutely. We'll switch it up.
Maybe some Saturdays or whatever. So.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Unless there's anything else?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item number four, review of use of downtown sidewalks by food and beverage businesses. I believe I'll let, uh, Mr. Berger introduce this, if he would.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we put this on because, uh, Jake Goulash and others have expressed an interest in, in determining whether, um, and how they can do, um, food and beverage on the city sidewalks in the downtown area. Um, right now, the, the only, we have a limitation that the, the business owners can use that first three or four feet, um, for decorations and, and signage and that kind of thing, which a lot of them have done. Um, some of them have even kind of wedged some chairs and tables within that four-foot strip, um, that doesn't look all that comfortable yet. And so, um, there's some interest, I think, in seeing, um, what can be done in front of some of those businesses that do want to do, uh, food and beverage outside. Um, and whether the council would be amenable to, um, them trying that in, in their, in the areas adjacent to their businesses in downtown. And we consider the, you know, that first half block, uh, to be part of that kind of downtown area. So that, that's where. area. So that's where the wooden foot comes in with Jake. We consider that to be still part of that downtown area that we're talking about this kind of thing happening. So I've tried to give you some background information about the width of things. And I thought the pictures that we had done for some other reasons really helped kind of show that. I'm gonna show that right now. You kind of see where we have that walkway that's about seven to eight foot wide. And then you have the brick strip, which is full of things and sometimes has some slope to it, which isn't really appropriate. That first three to four feet behind, beside the buildings work okay, as long as you don't have a lot of width. There are places that allow wider than that, four to seven or eight feet, as long as there's at least a four-foot walk around for people to go around the places out front. So when you get to the side streets, there's only 12 feet. And that's a picture, pardon me, that's a Google picture, so I couldn't, I was gonna take my own, but I didn't get around to doing it. But that shows the 12-foot, where you still have the six or seven foot in the middle, and then you have four foot on each side. So there would be room to do it in those locations in downtown. And a lot of cities do it. In the packet, we put in some requirements that Cedar Falls uses, that Carlo was able to find, that I think is, kind of gives you an idea as to how it could be governed and dealt with with people asking for permission to use that sidewalk. As far as we know, the alcohol authority allows this to happen. They have certain requirements about making sure it's approved by the city council before they would allow it as an outside service. And that there would be some fencing requirements around if there were alcoholic beverages. If there's non-alcoholic beverages, there really isn't a requirement that it be fenced. So for those that are doing just food and non-alcoholic beverages, they could use the, that three or four feet. And in addition, maybe move a little bit into that next four feet so that when you're serving the table, that kind of thing, there's a little room to work around, as long as we maintain that walkway for pedestrians. So we're really asking you to think about this, to have some discussion here, and give the folks some direction as to whether or not you're interested in doing it. And if so, give us direction as staff, so we can put together some reasonable rules and regulations when it comes to that situation.
I'm looking at Jake's building here, the north-south picture. And that area, that sidewalk there is like crazy wide, but it's not narrow either. I'm almost, at first, I kind of wonder what Jake's thinking there, like how far out. But this almost looks like kind of a model area where we want to put some life in. It's really lifeless through there. But how far do we come over on the sidewalk? So, you know, it almost seems to me like that this may be the good place to start in terms of talking about COVID. That would be my thoughts, I guess, initially.
I think, Matthew, that we could probably do some, you know, that four to six foot of width, it still allows you enough room to get around, especially on that side street in particular, because the sidewalk goes all the way to the curb and it doesn't have any slope there. So there would be, in that block, it would be easier to do that, to get to have walk, area to walk around on the sidewalk.
But that's separate from the alcohol thing. That's having some sandwiches out there. Yeah, we definitely would have to, can't have alcohol. That'd be a mess.
Will there be a possibility of, you know, piloting this without having, you know, substantial, you know, ordinance in place? You know, like we, you know, we did it, I believe, around RagBride. There was an exception made for that, I believe.
So I think you could pilot it without the alcohol, I mean, for food and beverage. I think if you're gonna do the alcohol, you have to go to full, well, you could do a period of time, probably. You could probably say, we'll do it for three months this year or something of that nature, and set some rules and see how things go. But you'd have to get the approval so that they put it in their liquor license.
Great. You know, looking at this photo that's up there with the Wild Carrot, you know, last fall, when a couple of our federal representatives were in town, there was a couple that were sitting outside eating lunch there while we were inside. And I had an opportunity to speak with them, and they just loved the fact that they were able to, you know, sit outside, enjoy the weather with the, you know, pandemic and everything. And plus, part of the restaurant was, you know, off limits, so there was limited seating inside. So it worked out well for them. And they, so I really love the idea of these. The only challenge I see with the other one is just that little bit of more limited. But again, it's not as highly trafficked with pedestrians as this photo area.
I know Casa Robles has tried a few tables out front. They're getting a garden permit in the back. And so they will have an open place in the back. And they will be able to serve alcoholic beverages in the back because of that, for that reason.
Correct.
I know we, you know, we like to encourage that. We've had extra garbage cans. We took one down to make sure that they had that available to them so they wouldn't have to put their own out. And so I think it's, we've encouraged it, especially for the food people. I know the bakery had a few tables for a while. But I love to see it. This looks great when you have tables out in front of a place like the Wild Carrot.
I'd love to see that, you know, we're at 36 right now, you stated, roughly, that 36-inch allowance from the front.
Yeah, that was, I mean, that was intended back for decoration, but we've always said that first square, as far as the decoration type things. But, you know, as you see here, if you're serving the table, if you're feeding in and out, you know, they need a little bit more room than probably the three or four feet. But you'd still have a pretty good walkway if you consider a four-foot walkway to go around things. People like to go around, they don't mind that. I think it's, as long as you have that part of that walkway open at all times.
Yeah, and I think, you know, if I was able to, you know, when it becomes an action item in the future, if it does, if I was able to make a motion, I'd want to extend it to something of, you know, at night, it needs to be, you know, tucked away within that 36 or 48 inches. But during the business day, when they're open, as long as there's a pathway for people to get through of four feet, they could use the rest of it. Because in this scenario, the slant on the bricks is a little bit different, depending where you are. So there might be an opportunity to even put just two chairs out there and somebody just, you know, enjoying, like on the bakery side, enjoying their roll and a coffee. You don't have to necessarily have a table, per se. So making more use out of the space, just throwing it out there. Open it up for more use across the board, so.
We're looking for direction. So if anybody else has any comments, I appreciate it.
I like the idea. I just, the problem I have with maybe trying to do a trial run on the alcohol is with the fencing requirements, is if they put anything permanent in and then we decide not to stick with it, now they've incurred an expense on fencing or whatever, and it becomes a negative.
My idea there was just trying it due to the space on that section for any type of food service, you know. So not an alcoholic beverage test. I know that there's not a lot of food that comes out of the wooden foot, but that's not to say that they wouldn't have a Domino's Pizza delivered there, or get something from one of the other locations and bring it there.
Jimmy John's and all those.
Exactly. So, I mean, having a venue there, just trying it for the space is what I would want to see. But that's for the council to decide.
Okay. I think it's a great idea to try to encourage as much outdoor seating as we can. Certainly on Bremmer Avenue, I know that we're somewhat restricted on how much space they can use in front of their building. But if we can be understanding of what space needs there are, I think it would be fantastic to be able to do that. I'm a little bit more concerned about the alcoholic beverage part. I would, if that were being done, I think that it needs to be cut off at a fairly early time, because we don't want to have a whole lot of outdoor alcoholic beverage serving places after dark. I think it gets to be a problem. There's a noise problem. You probably have a problem with just the optics of it, people driving town and seeing parties going on along the street. I just don't think that's a good idea. So if that were being done, and I'm not really in favor of having the alcoholic part at all, there would need to be some very strict guidelines on that. On the side streets, the streets leading away from Bremmer Avenue, I think that if it's legally possible to allow people to go farther away from the building than four feet, if they use up seven feet, I don't have a problem with that. There's not that much foot traffic. There's still four feet that people can use to walk up and down the sidewalk. I would be willing to take a look at allowing them to use more space on the sidewalk on the avenues leading north and south from Bremmer Avenue.
I kind of agree with a lot of what Rod said. I think he phrased it well. I am a little concerned about making the walkways too narrow. And this is just something I'm aware of recently. With me and my new dog walking down the street, sometimes four feet is not enough to steer a curious dog around people eating food. So I just think that, you know, we just have to make sure that we're not restricting the walk area too narrowly.
I just, I think it's a great idea to have outdoor seating. And I'd be interested to hear more details about what the wooden foot wants to do. It'd be nice if there's something that could be done with that area behind the wooden foot and behind the theater at some point. I don't know how many people drive back in there or park back in there, but it seems like there's some space back in there that, I don't know if there's any way they could use that. But I'm glad to hear that the Casa Robles is pursuing seating in the back of their establishment. That'll be nice.
Yeah, I do know that the Westward tenants park back there during the day. So there would need some access, but I was given that consideration too. But back to Rod's comment about, you know, noise nuisance, that type of thing. We've been promoting the above-business, you know, rentals, and we've, you know, supported those. And so that would also be a concern of outdoor, you know, venue. So I really like that idea that Rod had presented as far as a cutoff time for the outdoor venue. So is there kind of a consensus to look into this a little bit further? I don't see anybody shaking their head no, so.
I want to make sure that we're encouraging businesses to do this. But I would love to hear what Jake has to, has exactly in mind here, too. I think it's the perfect place for what I think he could have in mind. It would be good, so.
Great. Yeah, maybe if Jake is up for it, is joining us on a future meeting to have that discussion or, you know, meeting with a couple council members that want to champion that, or whoever, academic development, whatever.
We'll look at some guidance, too, for your concerns about leaving walkways and that kind of thing. So we'll see if there's some reasonable rules we can come up with, even just for the food people. Because if we decide that there's no alcohol, that would be a different issue. And I think we can look at, we've already kind of allowed the food and beverage without alcohol to be out there, just to give them some seating area. And I think it works well. So we've tried that a little bit, and hopefully that would be something we could encourage them to continue to do and see how it works.
Excellent. Does that give you enough to go forward with, sir?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, moving into regular business, section F, item number one, Resolution 21-65, a resolution repealing Resolution 20-126, requiring face masks be worn by any member of the public while being an occupant of a public building. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2165, approving repealing Resolution 2126, requiring face mask be worn by any member of the public while being an occupant of a public building.
A second.
And I have a second. As we move forward with council discussion here, I just ask everybody to kindly remember that we are a working element as a team here, presenting, you know, facts and such. Like to keep the conversation moving so we can not be here necessarily all night. So with that, I will open it up for discussion.
Well, I'll open up where I started, and that was, I don't want this to be a political discussion. I said that time and time and time again. And so, you know, I talked about this Stanford study. I've been talking about that for months, actually. And it's been on, on the, on the New Institute for Health website since like last fall. That's how long this has been out there. And, you know, it's so sad. I throw this out there, and I don't mean for it to be a political trap, but that's what it is. It shows, it shows, it shows the non-professionalism here that's going on, all right? And I, you know, this, here's what happened with this. I'll tell you guys. Across the country, there are people, we're working on this together. We bring this up, we call it the Stanford Study. The dumb media bites on it, all right? The stupid media, USA Today, all of these outfits, which, by the way, we need to have on our, one of our next study session agendas, we should really talk about this media ownership, because this is corrupt to the bone. And when we understand this and how this connects the dots and how information gets into our communities, this is really, really important for us to understand this. But we don't, let's not get to that yet. But anyway, I very simply wanted to put this study out there first, because there has not been a dialogue with doctors. We've not even allowed any discussion at all. And that's such the sad part, you know, about this whole episode. So this is, this is sitting here on the National Institute for Health website. And let me just start with the conclusion. The existing scientific evidences challenges the safety and efficacy of wearing face masks as preventative intervention for COVID-19. The data suggests that both medical and non-medical face masks are ineffective to block human-to-human transmission of viral and infectious disease such as SARS-CoV-2 and COVID-19 supporting against the usage of face masks. Wearing face masks has been demonstrated to have substantial adverse psychological and physiological effects. These include hypoxia, hypercapnia, shortness of breath, increased acidity and toxicity, activation of fear and stress response, rise in stress hormones, immunosuppression, fatigue, headaches, decline in cognitive performance. And it goes on and on and on here. But you know what? We've seen all of this stuff. And that is what I'm trying to show you, that we've witnessed it. Now we've got study after study after study after study that shows that. So that's why we must bring this real quickly. And I also want to make sure that we're really opening up the dialogue here for discussion, because this has been stopped. And the media has not at all treated this issue fairly, not at all. As a matter of fact, the media is in big trouble for some of this stuff. I mean, big trouble. With that said, I want to let everyone else speak here. But I want to make sure that we're being open and honest about information. We're not trying to be political and showing, I mean, it was ridiculous, really, throwing this stuff back to council. It was simply a government document that I wanted you to read the conclusion. It was simply a government document that I wanted you to read the conclusion, not for it to be political. Let's have, science is about A and B, A and B. You've not allowed B. So please, let's allow B.
Thank you, sir. I know our guest councilman, Dr. Polk, had a presentation whenever, I just wanted to throw that out there that he had requested an opportunity to to share that information as well. I just want to be also careful that we aren't interrupting each other so that people finish their points and and we can respond from there. So, thank you.
Well, I'll be happy to take this opportunity just to kind of give my opinion on this thing and thank you for listening to me. You know, lest be accused of political grandstanding today and probably things that have been going in our society for those who are contrary to the public opinion, I probably have something to lose. I just really want people to be well. And my professional and personal experience with this, with the disease itself and with ramifications of our response to this disease has convinced me that we've gone too far. Early on, you know, the disease itself kills the host by inducing an overreaction of the immune system that causes the immune system to kill the healthy parts, particularly of the lung, in addition to the infected parts, which causes the human to die. My concern early on in this, and I expressed this to a number of people, was that our society would respond in the same way. We would overreact and hurt the healthy parts of our society and attempt to protect those parts of our society that were sick. And I believe that's been kind of panned out to have been part of what the problem is. Obviously, COVID-19 pandemic, it's a horrible disease. It's created grave harm for many people and there's nobody that's disputing that this is a bad deal. But the pandemic has come to constitute much more than the disease itself. The pandemic has come to constitute many harms and injuries as, as we've tried to respond and stop something that I don't believe we have the ability to stop. To support some of my contentions, I've offered three studies and some data that I presented as part of the agenda. The first study was a CDC study that was released on March 5th. The conclusion was that it was statistically, that it was statistically significant, statistically significant, but the conclusion was that it can reduce the spread of COVID-19. And if you look at all the articles that talk about masking and mask mandates and things such as that, you never see the statement they do reduce. You always see some sort of qualifier like they can, they will, they might, they should, they could, things such as that. And the reason for that is just because there's not, you can't do a randomized controlled clinical trial on masks in the public. Because why? It's unethical to do a study that forces someone to do something that they haven't consented to. You can't force someone to not wear a mask to do the study during a pandemic and you certainly can't force someone to wear a mask because it would be an unethical study and you wouldn't have informed consent. So just as that is a marker, I also want to talk about the study itself, you know. I do not believe the study, though it's statistically significant, is clinically significant. The results show that there wasn't, there was not a stoppage of any spread of disease. There was only a slowing down of the disease by less than two percent. And I don't think that gain is worth, that little bit of gain is worth all the problems we've gone through to attempt to gain that. The second study is the same, that I presented is the same study that Mr. Schneider was talking about earlier. It's a, it's a study that's published in the, by the National Center for Biotechnological Information, which is a subsidiary of the National Institutes of Health. And the conclusions were, as Mike, as what Matt said, that it, you know, it was a major analysis, which is this, this author went through and studied you looked at a bunch of different studies and information. He gathered that information, came to some conclusions as, that the conclusions that masks didn't really make much difference and that masks cause harm. This was a similar type of analysis and study that started the whole process of us wearing masks. Again, there's no certain study that says masks do stop the spread of COVID or that they do prevent the spread of COVID. There's only studies that suggest that it may. And so what has happened over the last year since we've had these things in place? Study I presented is from the American Psychiatry, that's talked about the harms that have been associated with people throughout this pandemic. Weight gain and weight loss, involuntary weight gain is like an average of fifteen pounds, or median of fifteen pounds and then unwanted weight loss of twelve pounds. There's been many sleep disturbances, increase in alcohol consumption and drugs. Parents of school-aged kids have done worse, particularly mothers. Fathers have increased their weight and have increased their drinking. These social workers have had a significantly harder time because of the stress associated with, not only with the disease, but with the responses to the disease that require people to not work, not socially interact, not be able to make a living. And then people of color have been disproportionately affected by these results as well. The last thing I'd like to talk about is the data I presented. It's a data on the states. It was collected by the Becker Hospital Review, which is an area that collects information, but the death, the cases, the case rates and the death rates were right off the CDC. And then the level of restriction is an evaluation that they did themselves. If you look at all the states and you can find a pattern based on the response of those states, you're going to be lucky because there really isn't a pattern that is based on the states that were more, some states that were very restrictive had decent outcomes, some states that were not restrictive had decent outcomes and vice versa. But the only thing I can see that adds up as a pattern with these numbers is states that were in the north and states that were urban in nature had worse outcomes, which stands to reason. When you're in the north, you're inside more and you're in urban, you're around other people more. So it stands to reason. But I think the best examples to compare, and then states that were southern, where it's warm and more rural, where people were farther apart, tended to have less problems. But it wasn't, there was no absolute indication one way or the other. But I think the best comparison is two states, they're warm weather states. They took dramatically different approaches and that's the states of Florida and the states of California. Florida was the eighth least restrictive state according to this analysis and California was the forty-seventh least restrictive state. So in other words, one of the most restrictives. Yet their numbers are essentially the same. Florida had nine thousand nine hundred and forty cases per hundred thousand. California had nine thousand three hundred and eighty-one cases per hundred thousand. Florida had one hundred and sixty deaths per hundred thousand. California had a hundred and fifty-four deaths per hundred thousand. Yet Florida is average age in Florida is forty-two, excuse me, is forty-two point five and the average age in California is thirty-seven. We know age is the single biggest predictor of bad outcomes with COVID. So the fact that a state that is average is five years older is one of the older states in the country as compared to California, which is one of the younger states in the country, they took diametrically different approaches and ended up in the same place leads me to believe that, you know, whatever we do really isn't going to change these things. This thing's going to do what it's going to do. It's going to make us a natural disaster and we can't stop natural disasters. The COVID virus is a live thing. It lives in humans and it exploits human behavior to stay alive. So other than humans develop immunity through herd mutations or through natural exposure, the only really way to stop the spread of the disease is to force humans to not act like humans. Now, that can be done for a short period of time, but the longer that goes on, the harder it is for humans to not continue to act like humans and the more harm that is occurring to those humans by not being allowed to act by humans. Forcing humans to not to be separated from the communities which in which they live, the communities that which are important to them is harmful to those humans. And masks are a component of that forced separation from people's communities. You see, when you're wearing a mask, people aren't smiling, people are being dehumanized, people are not, you know, responding to each other. You can see it in the store, you can see it on the street. People, when they're masked, they don't interact. They walk past each other. The masks promote fear. They promote fear that the person walking next to me, that's my fellow human being, is, has ability to harm me, whether they're trying to or not. So social distancing prevents people from being parts of their communities. People have not been able to go to churches, they've not been able to go to works, they haven't been able to go to their coffee clutches and all the other communities that are associated that make people be alive and be well. Humans are communal beings and when they're separated from their communities, they do poorly. Now, at some point, this has to end. I think it should have ended a long time ago. But from a practical standpoint, at this point in Bremmer County, thirty-three percent of the Bremmer County residents have been immunized. Seventy-nine percent of those residents over sixty-five, who are the people that are really at risk? If you're under seventy, if you're under sixty-five, you have between a ninety-nine percent chance of surviving COVID to if you're twenty-five years old, you have a ninety-nine point nine percent chance of surviving COVID. And if you're ten years old, you have a ninety-nine point nine nine eight percent chance of surviving COVID. So those in the category at risk, those over sixty-five, seventy-nine percent of them have been immunized. So that leads me to believe that everybody in Bremmer County that's over sixty-five that wants a vaccine has been able to obtain one. And so why should we keep things shut down when the vast majority of those who want in the, in the risk areas that want to be protected have been protected? And you add in that that means thirty-three percent of the twenty-five thousand people in Bremmer County have been vaccinated. That's eight thousand two hundred and fifty people. There's been three thousand cases of COVID in Bremmer County. So that brings us up to what, eleven, roughly eleven thousand people, which is nearing half the population. And there's been estimates out there that between three and ten times the number of positive cases are people who have had the disease and didn't know they've had it. So at this point in time, for the benefit of all our citizens and to stop forcing compliance with the medical intervention through government power and government force, I think it's time to allow people to have the choice of whether they feel it's necessary for them to wear a mask or not and allow people that feel it's in their best interest not to wear a mask to not wear a mask. And that's basically what I have to say unless someone has any questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Polk, I just want to say you're in great company. Dr. Martin Kulldoff, professor at Harvard, agrees with you. Dr. Gupta from Oxford agrees with you one hundred percent. Dr. Jay Bhattacharya, who has been a total rock star during, since the beginning of this pandemic. He is from Stanford. Go ahead and try to debunk any of this, guys. This is so ridiculous how this conversation has played out. But please, stop with using the corrupt media in this stuff. I'm going right to government documents.
I have to say that, you know, thank you, Dr. Polk, for your information. And I, I value what you, what you have said and the research that you've done and the education that you're providing for us and for the community right now. Because I really think that education from the right people has been lacking in the community statewide and in the nation worldwide, I guess, honestly. Things that I feel are most impactful more than a mask. Number one has been hand hygiene. That is, the number one way to reduce infection is hand hygiene before and after everything. And I think I've been saying this from the beginning. And I think that masks, you know, although they do help in, under various situations, we know that COVID can spread in different ways where a mask possibly may not help as much as everybody wants it to be, wants it to help. So again, the most impactful thing is, you know, I feel has, as an educator, as a nurse, has been hand hygiene and really, you know, self-awareness of what is your health? Are you sick? Are you feeling sick? Am I feeling sick? And staying home when you're sick or if a family member is sick, being able to stay home. For instance, if your kid is sick, not sending them to school with a bunch of Tylenol just so you can go to work. And also, you know, employers as well. I think this has been very impactful to help reduce the spread of not just COVID-19, but other things like influenza, you know, stuff like that. But employers not punishing their employees for staying home when they're sick. Not getting in trouble for staying home when your kid is sick. Those things have been huge impact on health itself. However, you know, some of the negative impacts that you talk about, Dr. Polk and Matt, you know, I can attest personally for some of the things like, you know, around in my family and seeing my friends. I have friends that are medical providers that are suffering from post-traumatic stress because of the pandemic. Because number one, people don't believe that there are people sick out there. They are, there are people sick. And it did get bad for healthcare workers. And people didn't believe the healthcare workers. And then they were afraid, you know, was there enough PPE, stuff like that? And then just seeing the sickest of the sick. You know, that, that caused some post-traumatic, I think. You know, with those lack of supplies and understanding, people not believing them. Physical health definitely a decline. You know, my family members, you know, my dad is one of them, that he is terrified, terrified of this and wouldn't go anywhere. And literally, he used to go everywhere, socialize, that is what he needed to do. And he doesn't go anywhere. He's, he's so paranoid. He doesn't want to go out anywhere and he doesn't walk like he used to and he is, he could barely walk anymore. You know, that because he hasn't gotten, he hasn't gotten his healthcare, he's afraid to go to the clinic and get sick. You know, that's not just my dad, that is multiple people's dads. Okay? So, you know, the psychological, you know, depression, increased domestic violence, we need to be focusing on those as well. Because though, you know, we can't focus this all on one percent, two percent. We have to think of the other ninety-eight percent, what's going on with them as well. And I think right now it is time to start healing from this and start opening back up and being brave and, and maybe continuing that hand hygiene. Continuing to stay home if you're sick and monitoring yourself and just your self-awareness. And if you can wear a mask, you want to wear a mask, that should be up to you. And if you can't wear a mask or you don't feel like it's appropriate to wear a mask, that should be up to you. If you want to get a vaccine, get one. I did. If you don't want to get a vaccine, there's people in my family that says, no, I don't trust it. And that's okay. It should be up to the people. So I, I think that's where, where we should stand. We should really start healing at this point. We cannot, we need to move forward.
I have a question for Dr. Polk. Do you recommend that people get the COVID vaccine?
Well, that is broadly from a public health standpoint, yes, I recommend that everybody gets the COVID vaccine. But my, my individual advice is based on the individual that's sitting in front of me when I'm having a conversation with them in the office. Because not every person is right to get a COVID vaccine. And I think every person should have the ability to make the determination whether the COVID vaccine is the right decision for them or not, without coerced or forced into doing so. Again, coercion and force to achieve compliance in a medical intervention is, has been and always will be an unethical position to be in. We cannot force people to undergo medical interventions and expect things to come out well.
I just have a couple of comments about this discussion and then I have a broader statement I want to make. I think regarding the research paper that Matt provided to us, it's unfortunate that it's now taken on the name of the Stanford study because the author is not associated with Stanford Medical Center. And the paper is not actually a study. The paper is a list of various theories and it's titled the hypothesis and that's what it is. Most of the sources for the paper are actually several years before twenty twenty. And so most of the comments made in the paper do not pertain to research that was done on the coronavirus. I think, you know, if you consider masks a medical intervention and don't want things to be coerced or forced, some people consider seatbelts a forced or coerced measure, that we do consider a medical intervention, just like a bike helmet or a motorcycle helmet. There are places that have laws requiring that people wear motorcycle helmets or wear their seatbelts. And I consider those sort of a medical intervention, even though they're in a car, because they can prevent death or serious injury. There's two issues that are interrelated that I want to comment on tonight. The first is the code of ethics under which waiverlessly elected and appointed officials are expected to conduct business. And the other issue is that of COVID-19 mitigation. And the other issue is that of COVID-19 mitigation strategies in city-owned buildings. And that's what we're talking about, is city-owned buildings, not, not the world in general. Our Code of Ethics is detailed in Section 2.22 of the City Council Rules and Procedures Manual, which was most recently approved by this council in February 2020. The introductory sentence is as follows, quote, "City-elected and appointed officials must create public confidence where it is lacking and maintain it at all times by demonstrating a sincere adherence to the highest ethical standards," unquote. Included among the several listed ethical duties and responsibilities are the following, quote, "Respect all individuals and demonstrate courtesy to everyone," that is point I, unquote, and, quote, "Be dedicated to the highest standards of honor and integrity in public service," unquote, that is point L. These two points are pertinent to tonight's meeting because of an email that was sent last Tuesday morning, April twentieth, at six twenty-two AM by Councilman Schneider to Mr. Bronner, Mayor Hoffman, and two council members, Mr. Cangis and Ms. Beaufort, who had recently voted with Mr. Schneider to end the mask requirement in city buildings. The email was not sent to the council members who voted to extend the mask requirement, Councilmembers Dranko, Glazer, Bergen, and me. Mr. Bronner forwarded the email to us later that morning. I'm going to read Mr. Schneider's email in its entirety. Quote, "I'm requesting this as an immediate action item on the next study session meeting. One, removal of current face mask ordinance. Two, return to council chamber." And I continue to quote, "This is riddled with corruption. The other council member may not see that. It will take convincing from the rest of you to know how wrong and terribly immoral this is. We need to get past this and quickly. Finally, I would like to review conflicts of interest policy with Councilperson Rathi. She works for a city hospital and is voting for medical interventions. This concerns me. What kind of perverted science is she using? People are asking that now. This looks bad for the hospital," unquote. Mr. Schneider's harsh language and baseless accusations are concerning. His implication that those of us who disagree with him or our position on the mask issue are, quote, "corrupt," unquote, and/or, quote, "immoral," unquote, is uncalled for and creates what could be interpreted as a hostile work environment. In most well-run businesses, such accusations would cause an employee to be reprimanded or even terminated. In public service, such accusations, without supporting facts, distract from the real work at hand. They corrode the ability of elected officials to work together toward common goals, and in my opinion, could be interpreted as violating our Code of Ethics. With regard to his comments directed at me, his allegations are confusing, false, and border undefamatory. He implies that I am violating the city's Code of Ethics by using my standing as a physician to promote a medical intervention, masks. I disagree. As I have never made myself out to be the, quote, "city physician," unquote, I have received no financial gain as a result of voting for this mask policy, and I work for an institution that's governed by an elected board separate from the city council. I have shown his statement to the hospital attorney and the acting hospital CEO. Neither of them sees any conflict of interest on my behalf, and neither does the city administrator, whom I've also consulted. Equating my recommendation that we require mask use at city buildings with a conflict of interest would be like accusing a businessman serving on the council, like Mr. Schneider, of having a conflict of interest each time he votes on an economic development issue. Our Code of Ethics requires us to publicly disclose potential conflicts for any issues coming before the council. I did this last year when I abstained from discussion and voting on the Red Fox Inn proposal because I was a Bartle's Board member at that time. Prior to that, when the council was asked to approve Waverly Health Center's procurement of loans for their construction project, I sought the city attorney's advice and was told my employment at the hospital did not pose a conflict of interest on that vote. In 2017, before I even declared my candidacy for council, I sought the city attorney's opinion about whether I could serve, given that I work at the hospital. And I was told there were no rules prohibiting that. Regarding Mr. Schneider's assertion that I am using, quote, "perverted science," unquote, and tarnishing the image of Waverly Health Center, I disagree, as does my employer. The hospital requires that all who enter their facilities wear a mask because it's advised by the CDC and backed by scientific evidence found in peer-reviewed journals, unlike the article from Mr. Schneider. The drama swirling around the issue of masks in city-owned buildings is an embarrassing distraction that pulls city staff's attention and energy from other projects. The bullying from Councilman Schneider is inappropriate and needs to stop. We were elected to make sure government functions efficiently and effectively for all. We were not elected to call each other names and squabble like children on a playground. Mr. Schneider toning down his rhetoric and following the Code of Ethics regarding mutual respect would make it easier for us to be an effective team and solve this and other complicated problems. I do not think it's our job as council members to decide whether masks can prevent the spread of COVID-19. That should be left to researchers and the experts at agencies like the CDC, the Iowa Department of Public Health, and OSHA. It is our job to decide whether our buildings should adhere to the advice of these agencies, all of whom continue to advise a combination of social distancing, hand hygiene, vaccination, and mask-wearing, especially indoors among groups of people who may not all be vaccinated. It's my opinion that we should follow the advice of these experts. Gradually, restrictions are being loosened as the number of vaccinations increases and we learn more about this virus. We all want to be able to move about freely and meet in person, but we have to balance that with public safety. I understand this is a delicate balance, and there are strong opinions on both sides, and there are severe and lethal outcomes to this disease, and in some cases, to the social isolation that it has required. I look forward to working with my colleagues to come up with some sort of compromise in the weeks ahead. Perhaps once all city employees who want to be vaccinated have done so, we could move toward requesting mask-wearing rather than requiring it. When all city councilpersons who want to be vaccinated have done so, we could begin meeting in person, social distancing when possible and masking when it is not. I'll finish by saying that I consider it a great privilege to serve the people of Waverly on this council, and I will try to continue to act in a way that reflects positively on my constituents and our community. Thank you for allowing me to express my thoughts.
Thank you, ma'am. We'd like to hear from those who haven't spoken yet or had an opportunity before we circle back around to those that have. Mr. Dranko, I see you're unmuted.
Yeah, I, I'd like to kind of get us back on track here. We're not really looking, or the purpose of this isn't looking to spread, to stop the spread of this disease. I mean, that's way beyond our pay grade. What we're looking at here is how can we best protect the health and lives of city employees? And that's all we're doing. I think people should wear masks, but if they decide they don't want to wear a mask, hey, that, that's fine, I, I really don't care. But when they're around our city employees, I want them to wear a mask because it's important that we protect our city employees. And that's really all we're discussing here. I think if all of our city employees who wanted to be vaccinated were vaccinated, and they had gone through the, the waiting period after vaccination to develop immunity, I would have no problem in removing the mask mandate in city buildings. So I'm proposing here, actually, I'm, I'm moving to amend and replace the resolution that's currently under consideration with a substitute Resolution 21-65. I will read it for you, but I think that Mr. Wurger has it, if you can put it up on the screen while I read it, Bill. And then after I finish reading the resolution, if someone would like to second it, that would be fine. All right, are you with me there, Bill? Okay? No, that's the wrong one. Oh, maybe, maybe you don't have the...
It was emailed, it wasn't...
Yeah, I emailed it to you, it wasn't part of the thing. I, I can read it, it's not terribly long, and I think people will get the gist of it. And I would rather that you had it in front of you while you're doing this, but... A resolution amending and replacing Resolution 20-126, requiring face masks be worn by any member of the public while being an occupant of a public building. Whereas the city council, the city of Waverly, has an obligation to protect the health and safety of city employees. And whereas for use in this resolution, a public building shall be defined as a city of Waverly building, including City Hall, Civic Center... Yeah, there we go. That's right. Civic Hall, Civic Center. I have removed Public Library from this list. So cross out Public Library. Recycling Center, Public Service Facility, Golf Pro Shop, Golf Maintenance, Airport Facility, Park Shop, Police Department city-side, Water Department, Water Pollution Control Facility, Fire Station, Cemetery Office, and an added sentence here, but excluding the Public Library, which is under the governance of the Library Board of Trustees. Whereas wearing of masks is recommended by the CDC to reduce transmission of the virus that causes COVID, and whereas requiring the public to wear face masks while in public buildings will protect the health and lives of city employees, and whereas vaccines are now becoming available that are effective in preventing an individual exposed to the coronavirus from contracting COVID, whereas a defined date for removing the mask mandate will make it no longer necessary to review Resolution 20-126 at future council meetings, now therefore be it resolved that wearing of masks by the public in public buildings will no longer be required twenty-one days after all city employees who desire to be vaccinated have received all required doses of one of the approved COVID vaccines.
What is, what are we basing that on? And number one, where is the state in this? I thought we invited them to this party so they could tell us about what they're seeing. And then why haven't we called the governor? The governor went one direction and we went the other.
Second, Mr. Schneider...
Yeah, I was gonna step in. I've got a motion by Mr. Dranko on the amended motion. He has proposed that. We've got a second by Mr. Bergen. Need a voice vote on favor to accept the amended motion as read and displayed by...
No, we have to discuss it first.
Yeah, we have to discuss it, then I think it's a local vote, isn't it?
Yeah.
Wrong about that.
I'll allow it.
My, my biggest question or concern with the amended, uh... resolution as it's worded is the last, the, the actual, therefore, at the very end. I don't think it is allowable for the city to monitor, ask, know what our city employees have had as terms of COVID vaccinations or not. That's private health information. I don't think employers are permitted to know that. And so putting that in a resolution, I think, is right off the bat stating something that is illegal.
Actually, Tim, this is what I do for a living with Hepha and Alyssa, and it is perfectly legal to ask an employee if they have had, if they have been vaccinated. If they say no, you cannot ask them why they have it. But it's perfectly legal to ask them if they've been vaccinated. If an employee refuses to answer, that would really be an issue that they basically either desire not to be vaccinated, the same thing as an answer that they, they decided not to become vaccinated. So that's not a, a privacy issue. It's pretty settled law that you could ask an employee whether they've been vaccinated or not. And it, it, it's a little bit more difficult, I know this is probably getting off the subject, but you opened the door to me to talk about...
No, I'm, I'm curious about it because it just seems very, very, you know, you know, have you, why are you taking your medications? Are you doing this? Are you, at a certain point, you know, you know...
At a certain point, you're in violation of the Fourteenth Amendment.
Hang on, Matt, Mr. Cangis is still speaking, okay?
Sorry. That, that's just, that, that's, that's my concern. So if, if there is, I just, you know, having been involved in, in a management side before in other businesses prior to, prior to getting into teaching, I know that there is a lot of things you can't ask and you can't inquire about.
Right.
And so that, to me, just jumped out at me as something concerning.
Yeah, no, actually, it's perfectly legal to ask somebody that, to ask an employee that. But you cannot ask them why they did not get a vaccine if, if they said they didn't because that might disclose medical information, that maybe they had a medical reason for not getting the vaccine. So you can't ask them why, but you can ask them yes.
I also think it's quite open-ended as to, you know, a majority or whatever. I mean, are we gonna do a survey? How many do, how many has to be vaccinated before we say okay? What are any of those limitations that's kind of open-ended and up to a variety of interpretations?
This is drifting worse. I mean, I, this is, I, I don't understand where we're coming from with, there's no science to back this, none. We've got cases, lots and lots of cases. And protecting the employees, we've talked about that. We've wrecked society. We've wrecked it. So, I mean, we need to have city employees who want to take a tiny risk of, of getting a virus. We have to have that. You know, I talked to leaders of faith, and they've, some of these guys have abandoned their congregations. They've let them sit and wither and die with no communion even. That's not what that whole deal is about. We can't have that, leaders of faith. We can't have that. People are communal. It's time for us to get together. And there is some serious stuff we have to talk about the media. I know people don't like it when I say the word corruption, but I don't know what else to call it. If you have a nicer word for me, please let me know.
We're trying to get this discussion back on track about what the topic actually is. I've been contacted by a number of city employees who are very concerned about being forced to interact with people coming into public buildings that are not wearing masks before they've had the opportunity to be vaccinated. I think all of those people, if they've had the opportunity to be vaccinated and have been vaccinated, the chance of them, from what I understand, of actually contracting COVID is, is considerably reduced. And I, I'm just thinking here about trying to do the most that we can for those employees that have not been vaccinated and are very concerned about having people come into public buildings without any kind of protective device at all, you know, any mask. I know maybe, you know, I, I mean, it's arguable, obviously, because people are arguing it, whether masks are effective or not effective. You know, that's really not something we're gonna decide tonight. I just think that for the well-being of our employees, if there's any chance that a mask is going to be able to, someone wearing a mask will keep our employees from getting sick. I want that to happen because the very last thing that I want to have happen is some employee gets sick or even die because we revoked this mask mandate before they had an opportunity to get a vaccine.
Certainly, if anybody wants to wear a mask, I'm not objecting to any of that. Have we had any, for the city employees, has there been a vaccination clinic offered, or a couple of these vaccination clinics offered? I know that there's always openings with some of the pharmacies to get vaccinated. There, I mean, you can literally get an appointment the next day. So is there anything, you know, hey, we need, I just feel like if there's gonna be, if you want these limitations, or if you want to put these in here, we have to set some type of boundaries or it's gonna go on forever. You know what I mean? So, you know, I don't feel comfortable with it just being open-ended. I, I want specific things in there, like, hey, you know, we have to have a, we're gonna have a vaccination clinic. If you want to attend, here's two of them, and that's what we'll have, then... of them. That's what we'll have. Then here, everybody's vaccinated. I really do feel like there has been plenty of opportunity, plenty of openings. I've been looking at some of these openings with some of these, with the pharmacies, and there's availability. So I feel like at this point, if somebody has wanted to get vaccinated, they certainly can, could have been already vaccinated. And in, by, let's say June or May 1st, could already, you know, have antibodies.
I feel I need to. City clinic done. We had requested it prior. They were not available to do it. There were too many other entities wanting that. I do think the majority of staff had had the opportunity. There are a significant number of us in City Hall that are getting their second shot this week. That opened up approximately, well, four weeks ago, and that was the first time most of us had eligibility to try to get vaccinated. We are not part of the essential group at times or police, fire, public works, which had the opportunities earlier. So by the end of the week, we will know who still has a desire to be vaccinated. That is how we phrase it and talk about it. We don't ask specifically if they have or haven't. If there's someone else that would like to still be vaccinated, our pharmacy has reached out to us. So I think the ability is there. We just need to take a quick poll of if there are still individuals interested. I don't think there are many at all, but we will certainly reach out and do that this week regardless of what council decides tonight. But there is a significant number that are getting vaccinated this week, their second shot. Because until recently, Johnson &amp; Johnson was not available. It was all Moderna for the most part, very few Pfizer. And then when the Johnson &amp; Johnson was polled, it was just, we've not really had that opportunity for the one and done shot. As was thought to be the case earlier. It has truly been the Moderna, Pfizer, mostly Moderna. So the second shots will be happening for quite a few of us. Actually, some of us on this very call this week. And then we'll have the, I don't know if it's two weeks or whatever it is. I'm sure they'll tell us where we are to be monitored. I'm not sure how it's gonna work, but I would say by the end of the week, we will know for sure how many still would like a vaccine or not. The opportunities are there. I agree with you completely. We will just need to orchestrate that and for the most part, we have. So I don't think it's very long that everyone who wants one will have had one. In fact, I think this week that's possible.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
My point here, and, and when I say this.
I would point out that I got my first shot the day after I became eligible, which I believe was, you know, April 5th, April 6th. I will not get my second shot until May 5th. And it'll be two weeks after that before I have, you know, the accepted level of, you know, antibodies and immunity. So I personally will not be immune, you know, have my vaccine activated until May 19th. So, I mean, this idea that, and, and I was very quick to sign up for the shot as soon as I was eligible. So the idea that anyone on city staff who wants to get their shot has already gotten it, hopefully they've gotten their first shot. But I think that Rod's proposal of 21 days after everyone's gotten their second shot, everyone who wants their second shot is quite reasonable for protecting the health and well-being of our city staff.
I thought with, with that, I love the idea of that, but going forward into the future, what type of percentage of the staff? So there's, let's say there's 5% that decide that they don't want to take it. Is that gonna be reasonable to the, the council to still?
Anyone who doesn't want it, I don't think we're requiring them to do it.
Oh, absolutely not, right.
I mean, I, I think that, you know, there are lots of people, including myself, who are waiting to become eligible to get the shot. I think most people who are eligible have had the opportunity to get their first shot. And as soon as the, you know, protocols are finished, I think most people are, most people who want the vaccine will feel comfortable if we wait until their vaccine, you know, takes effect.
Right.
I don't think there's anyone who's holding out, you know, I'm gonna wait a couple of weeks to get my first shot just so I can, you know, stay remote a little bit longer and force other people to wear masks a little bit longer. I don't really think that's what's going on here.
Right. Regardless of what their intent is, they, they just firstly choose not to take it for whatever reason. The, the intent isn't the, the point there. I'm saying, so if 80% of the city staff have received it and gone through the 21 days and they're, they're, they've got the antibodies to be considered immune, is that a reasonable level for the council to even entertain a repeal of that resolution?
I just wanna throw out, I don't at all think it's even appropriate for us to set policy around Johnson &amp; Johnson and Pfizer's vaccine schedule. Are we getting a check from them? Is that what's going on here?
Hang on, Mr. Schneider. Thank you. You see my point there, Brian, is?
But I think that, so I think you're concerned about people who don't want to get the vaccine. And I think Rod's proposal very clearly says that if the people, pardon me?
I'm just taking it into consideration that there, we would love to see our city staff being 100%, correct?
Absolutely. But if they don't, if they don't want to be vaccinated, I, I mean, if they have the opportunity to be vaccinated and they choose not to be, I don't think that we can, I think that's, I mean, the purpose of the mask mandate is to protect our employees. If they are not interested in getting that vaccine, then I think that we have a reduced responsibility to protect them in that way.
Correct. However, there's other employees that those would be working around that, you know, would be subjected to that exposure if that's removed. And that's what my question is, is to what level of vaccination, whether it be 100% or 95% of the staff or 80%? What if we only get to 70%? Is it definitely, you know, we're only at 70% of our staff is vaccinated. We've gotta keep the masks here, but we're okay at 95%.
I think it's 100% of the people who want to be, if they don't want to be vaccinated, I don't think they're part of the equation.
Okay, so setting a, a goal date of June 1st would be a reasonable expectation that, you know, if everybody's had an opportunity and they've had that, that onboarding time for antibodies to build up, that it could be reconsidered at that first meeting in June. And there really wouldn't be any reason for the mask mandate to stand. I'm just playing devil's advocate here.
I suspect that's right. I think those dates are about right. But I also, I mean, as we saw with the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, we don't know what could change in terms of the supply line for vaccines.
Right.
So I think that it is reasonable to think that everyone could get their vaccines and it'd be effective by June 1st. But I like the way that, I like the considerations that Rod has put in his proposal because it allows for things to go wrong.
You're, you're absolutely right. I, I agree with that. The reason I ask that is be, in addition to the next agenda item as far as, you know, the comfort level to be able to come back into chambers, you know, remove the mask, come back into chambers, you know, that type of thing. So that's the only reason I ask that. It's kind of setting the stage for what could be coming next in these conversations for the better good of the, the conversation. I would like to, so that we don't run into the situation that Mr. Drankow and Mr. Kangas have run into in the past, is somebody to rush in and call a question. We haven't heard from Mr. Glazer if he has any comments that he would like to add. Or, we have heard from Tim already, but he can speak again, I guess, Carl.
Yeah, I, I support what Rod's trying to say in his, his amendment. I think we need to give the city employees a chance to get vaccinated. It's our job, like this has been said a couple of times already, it's our job, you know, as leaders to protect them. And if this is one of the ways that we can do that, I think we should do that. I think it's the right way to do it. I also have heard from a number of people, and I guess using phrases from other people, our bosses, who also wanna keep the mask mandate in place. For now, I have not heard from one person yet, and I've heard from quite a few that would like to get rid of it right now. So that being said, I think that's, that's my responsibility.
I'll throw one, one more thing into the mix is our seasonal employees that we were taking on leisure services, swimming pool, you know, giving that up. Will those part-time seasonal employees be carried into this mix as well? Just a, just a consideration.
I think if you start going down that road, you'll never have any result.
I, I understand.
We truly don't look at it that way. Most of them are high school, college-age kids. We don't get a lot of them. There are some older individuals that help in the parks, et cetera. But again, they've already had the opportunity long before most of us did. So.
Correct.
Back to what Rod's motion was, his resolution, I don't think I have an issue with it from a staff standpoint. They are my staff.
Right.
That 21 days, I think, is fine. I think by the end of the week, everyone who truly has wanted to get one, if they are part of the city government somehow, will have had that opportunity. If you wanna extend it a little further, make it end of May, fine. But I think we are close to that, if not there already. And we can certainly take a poll of that, so to speak, by simply asking who else would still like to be vaccinated, and it'll accomplish it. I don't see a need to drag this out any further based on who might or what it could have, should have. We'll be here all night.
Right. The only reason I brought that up is to preemptively address something that may have come up in the future that we have new employees. And obviously, we're gonna have, we may have staff turnover and those considerations are always gonna be part of the mix as well. So. Any final before I request?
Once again, I just wanna say we're not at all looking at the cost of this action. For everything we do, there is a cost. This has an enormous cost that we're, we're trying to say, well, we can avoid a case in City Hall possibly, but the cost is enormous. And I'm just saddened that this has, went down this path. So sad.
I, I also need to point out that removing a mask mandate also has a cost, okay? I wanna make it clear that I have a daughter who is in college on the East Coast, who has not come back to Iowa since June because of our inability to manage this disease. Iowa has some of the weakest regulations, and my daughter refuses to come back to the Midwest because she is terrified of catching this disease. And she is not alone. So when you're talking about the cost of forcing people to wear masks, there is an economic cost in tourism of people who refuse to come to Iowa because of our inability to enforce any sort of regulations. So you can talk about the cost of forcing people to wear masks, but there's an equal, if not greater, cost of not having mask regulations. So I just want you to keep that in mind in your calculus. When you are talking about costs, there is always a balance. There's a cost of doing something and there's a cost of not doing something. I apologize for getting out of.
All right.
My only, my only thing is to kind of piggyback on some of the, that we're at a point where I think everybody that wants one has or is getting them, simply because we have counties that are turning back vaccines to the states. They're not being used. If there were people that were clamoring to get the vaccine, they would be getting used and they wouldn't be being turned back.
On the amended motion presented by Mr. Drankow, seconded by Bergen, roll call clerk.
So first, we need to vote to replace this as the motion before we actually vote on it.
Approving the motion that's been amended. Correct.
Rafi?
Yes.
Kangas?
No.
Glazer?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
O'For?
No.
Schneider?
No.
I'm going to go to 4 to 3. The amended resolution is approved as an amended resolution. Any further discussion? Otherwise, roll call.
So this, this will then replace the first reading next, next month, the first Monday reading on it. What is the plan for surveying staff to know that we would have, start the timeline on that?
I'll accomplish that this week and update you by the end of the week where we sit. And we will designate a day for you to consider for the May 1st, the first meeting in May, May 3rd, to adopt that actual date once we know what we're dealing with.
That might, that might be a lot to try to get that done yet this week. Is, that's the timeline on that.
We've actually been talking about it for a week or so, just wondering where we are. So worst case, it would still hopefully be in time for the first week or the first meeting, Monday on the 3rd. If it's still too early, we'll have it through email. We'll, we'll find some way to make this available to council so they know who we're dealing with. Allow us to determine that date once we know what it is. I would still rather have it formally discussed and put out there again, just to be sure.
Okay. My only other, well, I guess I've got two. I will go ahead and join what appears to be the majority on, on this with this amended, setting a timeline in place. I believe we should be at a point where we should be opening up and staff should be getting, as I said, people that have, that want it, have had the opportunity. It's been available. We're, Dutha County and others are turning vaccines back in. So I do believe we're at that point. Now, I would offer my encouragement and, and well wishes to everyone getting their second doses this week and hopefully the second dose effects don't hit you too hard because that's been one that, in my experience from other educators, et cetera, that have had, had the two doses. That second one is the one that tends to knock people a little bit harder. A lot of water. Drink, drink, drink. The only other thing I wanted to note was in Dr. Raffi's reading of the email, she did misquote on there. She did add the word "no" into one of the sentences that was not in there. The sentence actually reads, "It will take convincing from the rest of you to how wrong and terribly immoral this is." She added the "no" in there to, to, in front of that. That just added to the coherence of it.
Tim, can you please clarify then? You are, if I'm correct, you are retracting your no vote?
No, I'm, my, my previous, I, I was willing to, to vote no on changing to the new resolution. But when it comes to voting for this new, for the, for the resolution as it comes up now, I will vote in favor of this because it does set a timeline and gets us moving towards that.
Okay.
What happened to the state? I thought we invited them. I've been several times. And I know I'm concerned here because when I ask them questions, I don't get any answers.
I did invite the state. I invited the hospital as well. And they had other meetings in this evening that they could not attend.
That's what I've heard for a year generally. That concerns me. A global pandemic, we're supposed to make decisions. Where do we get the information? It appears we do from the media. And you know how I feel about the media.
I would ask, when we get that data, Mr. Bronner, I just wanted this to be public. I just present that in raw figures as a percentage of the staff, not by department. And of course, that information is volunteered by the employees that, that are wanting to give it up. And I encourage the employees to do so so that the information that we have is factual for consideration.
My understanding, sir, is I'm not asking each individual if they've been vaccinated or not. If there is a individual that would like to still be, I will not have a percentage of who's been vaccinated because I don't think that is our business, whether we'd like to or not. I know we legally can. That is their decision. So I will be looking at, is there anyone still left that would like to have the opportunity? And we will orchestrate that if there is. Then, then we will know when the exact timeframe will be. So I will not be asking individual staff members when they've been vaccinated to determine the date going forward.
Yeah, it might be the direction to go is kind of a, a last call, you know, per se, that everybody's had that opportunity. Okay. Thanks for clarifying that, that, just knowing what information we're gonna get back. So, all right.
I'm, I'm curious as to whether we should just postpone the amended resolution then until next Monday, when we have the numbers, now that we know exactly what resolution we're gonna go with.
I'm already seeing opposition to that. We'll, we'll go with what we have. And we'll do that now with a roll call vote.
Okay. Schneider?
No.
Rafi?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Bowford?
Yeah.
Is that a yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am, for clarifying that. On a vote of six to one, was there absent? The amended resolution twenty-one dash sixty-five is approved. Moving on to item number two, resolution twenty-one dash sixty-six, a resolution declaring the city council will return to in-person meetings as it was before the COVID-19 pandemic. I'll entertain a motion as written or entertain a motion to postpone or let it die for a lack of motion. Any one of the three.
I'm still waiting for the science that says we should even do any of this stuff. Terrible.
I can make a motion to approve resolution twenty-one sixty-six, declaring the city council will return to in-person busy, meetings as it was before COVID-19 pandemic on. When's the first date in June?
You can just state that, first meeting in June.
First meeting in June twenty-twenty-one.
June seventh, that is, Carla?
Six, or seventh, yeah, seventh.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Council discussion.
I suppose a question should be asked. Will everyone who wants a vaccine have had their vaccine twenty-one days before the first meeting in June? Is there anyone who will not have gotten their vaccine by that time?
I had my second shot on, I had my second shot on March fourth, so I am good to go.
Yeah.
I don't think it's appropriate for us to set policy around vaccinations. I just don't. I think it's wrong.
So it seems to me that everyone who is waiting for their vaccine will have it by that point. So I may be the last one to be getting my second shot. And I will have mine by then. So I am comfortable supporting this resolution. But if there's someone else who is uncomfortable with the meetings resuming, they should speak up, and I will support them in that.
You know, I, I really think that in-person meetings are much better than, than Zoom meetings. I mean, I think we get a lot more accomplished and we do it in a much better way. I, I would really like to see us get back to in-person meetings. So I, I would support this. I guess the one question that I have is, um, the, the, the public area, the, the public seating in the council chambers, if that is going to be limited so that people can socially distance in the, in the, the public seating area. And then also, I would want to consider whether there should be some kind of viters placed on the dais between the, the council members. That, that, I think, would maybe be something that we need to think about before we actually begin to have in-person meetings again.
I was also curious on the, the public side of things. One of, one of the things I was wanting to make sure was that we had the, the mask, uh, mandate would have been pulled back before we'd go back into in-person. Because one of the big things about in-person, uh, meetings is it allows the public to be there a lot easier than on Zoom. Uh, I think we've noticed over the last year plus that we haven't had a whole lot of people joining us, um, via Zoom to, to put in public comments, which is unfortunate. It was a side effect of this, and I know there might be some that say, oh, that's not a bad thing that we don't. No, it's, 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 you know, the public has a right and needs to have the ability to speak to us, correct?
We've totally failed the public here, Jim. You are totally right. We have failed the public in a big way.
Okay. Matt, I'm generally on your side in removing the masks. But I also believe that we put them in place for a specific reason prior to the vaccines becoming available. And they've, to me, at this point, they've served their purpose. But prior to that, I think that they, they, there was a necessity for that. But I would like to think we need to have a discussion about how do we set up the chamber for the public to be able to speak to us, to be able to be welcomed back into our, our meetings in our process. So that, that is a concern, whether it's limiting the number of seats within the, in the chamber itself, and then having the spillover like we've had in the past when we've had overflow, flow crowds. I don't think we're gonna get overflow crowds right away. But I just don't think that's happening right away. But something about that, that I think, uh, and maybe city administrator and, and facilities can, can think about that, kind of look at that a, as we get closer to that.
Oh, wait, you have to base it on science. I mean, you just, we just can't make up policy like this. I mean, we really can't, and there is, you know, there are serious repercussions when we start fiddling with people.
Um, Kengas, we've already started that process at looking at what can be done from, uh, social distancing, et cetera. We're kind of reviewing that right now. My biggest question would be if there is a desire for partisans, whether it be partitions between council members, we would want to know that sooner than later, whether that's a discussing, discussion piece now, whether that is, um, early, a little later, because we have to get that order taken care of, et cetera. And so we do plan to put them on the very ends of the dais between us and the, uh, public there. And we will be moving public comments to the very middle of the floor, not right next to Bill. Uh, I always thought the podium should be in the middle anyway, as they're addressing mayor and council, not right to Bill and myself. So we are looking at trying to make some changes to accommodate some of that. If we have limitations, we'll report that to you as well, or see what we can do from a numbers standpoint. But we will do everything we can to accommodate the wishes of the public and the council. But the partitions are something that we would want to know sooner than later, if possible, simply because of the ordering time, not knowing what that would be, et cetera. So that's my only comments.
I think that if the, if somebody does want those partitions, they should probably email you right away then, right? I personally, like, I have hearing, uh, problems, and I frequently, if somebody's talking, I have to look at their mouth, um, so that I could hear everything. So, um, wearing a mask is kind of, and listening is very difficult for me. And then being in that building and then with partitions will be hard for me as well. So, um, you know, I do have that, the hearing loss that does affect me. So, um, you know, that's kind of a concern mine. But I do feel that if somebody wants to partition up, you know, we probably do need to, um, yeah, definitely let you know.
All right.
I just thought, like, to add, there was a, no. There was just one, what I'd like to add, there's a recent study by MIT that was just released. I just saw it, actually, this morning. That indicated that social distancing indoors doesn't make much difference whether you're six feet or sixty feet. When people are indoors and breathing the same air, that, there's social, the social distancing, the, the partitions in between, and none of those things really make much of a difference. The main issue is air movement and, and moving a chair into the, into the space and fresh air out of the space. Just, uh, and they even recommended nothing, something as simple as opening a window and putting in a fan in, actually. Does bet more good than social distancing and all these other options. So just something that you might want to consider before you make a lot of decisions on how you're gonna set this up, that some of the guys, some of the data is changing on that. Just, just so you guys can consider that. I'll be off, obviously, by then. I do, uh, agree, I do think that the compromise, uh, for the resolution that we just did was, uh, that you guys just did was a, was a good thing to do. I think setting an end to this is good for all. My, Tim answered my question, one of my questions on the in-person meeting. Since I've been, you know, on the council this month, there's not been one public com, comment on some very controversial topics. So it made me wonder if, if the Zoom was cutting down on public participation in the meetings and would agree that, uh, anything to get the people, get the meetings into the building where people have the ability to be there in person and publicly comment is a good thing. Thank you.
I did read the same thing that you did, Dr. Polk. So I, I agree with that.
All right. On the resolution twenty-one sixty-six with the date of June seventh applied, roll call Carla.
Rafi?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Bowford?
Yes.
Schneider?
No.
On a vote of six to one, was there absent? Resolution twenty-one sixty-six is approved. Moving into section G, reports from boards and commissions. Item number one is a Waverly, Reamer Waverly Law Board minutes of March eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Item two is golf commission minutes of March ninth, twenty-twenty-one. And item three is leisure services commission minutes of March eighteenth of twenty-twenty-one. All received into the record. Section H is staff updates. Mr. Bronner, if I may.
Uh, yes, sir, I have a brief update from Garrett.
Yep, thank you. Uh, just wanted to, uh, remind everyone about Art Walk, even though Travis did mention it, uh, today when he was on. Art Walk is this Saturday in Coleman Park. Goes from ten o'clock until four o'clock. And we are still looking for volunteers to help out with the welcome tent, help out with setup, that type of stuff. So if anyone's interested, uh, get ahold of me or get ahold of Tiffany at the chamber, and we'll get you set up. Farmer's Market is also, uh, beginning, uh, Saturday, May first, eight-thirty to eleven-thirty on Saturdays, then from, uh, uh, May first until October. Then starting in June is when they will start their Tuesdays as well. And that runs from three o'clock until, uh, five-thirty. So, uh, oh, sorry, one other thing. May eighth is the, uh, garden planting day, the community gardens. So if anyone's interested in that, uh, we take volunteers to help with the planting as well. And that is all I've got for tonight.
Thank you, and don't forget to log your blue, um, grand blue mild times. All right. Move forward to city council comments. Just gonna start up here with Mr. Drinkow at my top.
I'm ready to go, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
We're almost out of time. All right, Mr. Bergen?
I just wanted to remind, I mean, as reiterate, all the things that are going on this weekend. So we've got the Art Walk, we've got the Try By Night Triathlon, we have the Spring Retail Open House down downtown. So there are so many things go, and apparently the, uh, Farmer's Market is opening up. But there are so many things going on this weekend. I encourage everybody to get out and enjoy them.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Schneider?
I have nothing.
Ms. Bowford?
Nothing.
Ms. Raffi?
I want to put a plug in for the Exchange Club Golf Tournament that is happening May eighth at the Waverly Golf Course. And if anyone would like to get a team together, uh, they can contact Jordan at the Pro Shop. But it's a wonderful cause. Exchange Club raises money for all sorts of local nonprofits. Their main goal is to prevent child abuse. They also support first responders, um, and many other worthy organizations. So all you golfers, it's a great cause, and, uh, just call the Pro Shop for details.
Thank you. Great organization they are. Mr. Glazer?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Our guest, Mr. Dr. James Polk.
Oh, James. Just again, thank you for letting me be involved. I've really never paid attention to city council actions prior to this month, and I've found it to be quite interesting. And I probably will pay a little more attention in the future. But I found it to be a, uh, worth, uh, involved with you guys.
Thank you. And Mr. Kengas?
I would just add that there is a soccer tournament out at the Soccer Field High School JV Tournament, I believe, this week. So if you want to come out and yell at the refs or me in particular, you can. But we'll be there, that's all.
All right, what field number? Never mind. All I have is with everything going on in this weekend, might be a little bit slower in town with all the people trying to find their way around. So just be patient, be respectful, and be welcoming. That's all I have this evening. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moves that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Kengas. And all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening.